We convene the meeting, we were just in executive session discussing contract negotiations for several of our bargaining units for this year and now back in open session. Welcome, Happy New Year everybody. Tonight, first order of business is public input. Anybody from the public wishing to be heard? Seeing no one at this time, we'll move to our student report and tonight we have Madison Capazudo. Madison?
So, the first thing that made the top of my list was a big thank you to Mrs. Willis for the two snow days, including winter vacation, it was a very nice way to go out. We were talking about it earlier and it just so happened that it fell so that we really had like four extra days as opposed to just the two. So I think the students were more than pleased with that ruling, so thank you.
I talked to a lot of parents that didn't share your...
Yeah.
Oh yeah, see? I thought it was great. I thought it was great.
The seniors especially.
Yes, especially. Feel free to do it again, we welcome and entertain the idea. So, secondly, we had a half day this past Thursday for the NEASK accreditation process. There was no school last Friday for a district-wide teacher professional development day. In sports, we have the hockey team that suffered their first loss this past Saturday to Penn Tucket. They will play again at Linfield, against Linfield, this Wednesday at 8:00 PM. Let's see, let's see, moving down to the girls' track team, the indoor track team obviously, which won the Division V state relays last Friday night.
That's great.
Girls' basketball, which beat Triton on Friday after losing to the Saugus varsity girls' team over vacation, which was nice for redemption. Boys' basketball, lost 51 to 50 against Triton but beat Masco. Swim team captains are reporting an excellent season with 17 freshmen. The coaches and the captains are saying that they're very pleased with the way that the program has been continually building the last few years, this year in particular. They've had multiple athletes already qualify for CALs and I got wind that they are actually anticipating winning, so hopefully we're not jinxing them by saying that, but...
I think they're undefeated so far.
Yeah, they're very, very pleased with the way that their season is going. I heard that they actually had just beat Linfield for the first time, I'm not sure in how long, but in quite a number of years, so that's going very well. The adventure club took a ski trip this past weekend and came back all smiles today, so I'm assuming it went very well. I heard it was a lot of fun, I don't ski myself, otherwise I probably would have gone. Xanadu, the Maskers production, is opening on January 31st and February 1st and then a third and fourth performance will be on February 7th and 8th. All four performances are going to be held in the auditorium at the high school at 7:00 PM. Student council is participating in a polar plunge on Sunday, January 26th, in Winthrop to benefit the Special Olympics, followed by a luau-themed party at the Winthrop Yacht Club. And what the polar plunge is, is you have to get certain pledges and reach a certain goal, I'm not sure how much it is exactly, and they go to a beach and they jump into the ocean, come out of the ocean and freeze. And all of the funds are donated to Special Olympics. And, let's see, where are we? Midterms begin next Tuesday, following our day off from school on Monday for Martin Luther King Junior Day. As the schedule goes, we have a full day on Tuesday and then half-days Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of next week. Wednesday of this week, there will be a middle school open house at the high school at 7:00 PM, beginning in the auditorium, followed by an activity fair in the gymnasium. The student council Hyannis attendees were announced at the end of last week, they are Jackie Lanzaro, Alex McGeehee, Rachel Gudrow, Danielle Gillis, Sophie Warren, Mackenzie Sturdevent, Gabby Lanzaro, Emily Zhang, Liz Carlson, Julia Mealy, Jordan Shilly, Christina Fusco, Ally De Orlando, Pat Driscoll, Aiden McDonald and Dan Madden. It's a very lengthy list this year, we're sending 16 students as opposed to the normal 12. Student council advisor, Mrs. Santorino, was actually just notified this afternoon that they had a room that had opened up, so they were able to bring four more students. And it is kind of an unwritten rule that priority is given to councils who do particularly well down at the conference in Hyannis and seeing as we had a great experience and took home some prestigious awards last year, I think that that's why they had extended the open room to North Reading, which is always very nice. Three students, Emma Hoey, Montana Robertson and Kaylin Scher, were just invited by Mr. Bernard to paint a sort of mural with the words of North Reading High School's core values up in the sea wing on the wall, which is very exciting because otherwise we're just looking at labs and beakers and, you know, math, which I don't like very much. And lastly, the Ryla, which is the Rotary Youth Leadership Awards applications for the 2014 program are due to Mr. Bernard this Wednesday. And I think that's it. Does anybody have any questions? I know that was kind of long.
Do we go to school about two and a half days a week now?
I was gonna ask that.
Works wonderfully.
Jesus.
Seems like there's not very much going on.
Between the holidays, the snow days and the half-days.
Every time we have a student representative that mentions midterms and finals, I get a chill because that's the greatest thing about adulthood is there's no midterms and finals. Just so you know.
Thanks.
Yeah, there's just finals.
That's the only thing, everything else is downhill.
Yeah, I forget what anything else.
Lovely. Well, so for student work, I brought some pieces from my ceramics class. We just finished up a unit on coils and coil pots and so Ms. Absless, who's the ceramics teacher at the high school, she's very great and always breaks things down for us in stages. And so what she had us do, after she always gives us demonstrations and then she'll kind of let us have at it and she's always around trying to help us out. So how she broke down the unit was she had us complete a packet on the study of some Grecian pottery and some Asian pottery and we were encouraged to incorporate some of those designs into our pieces. So she had us do three sort of prototype pieces, which were obviously the smaller versions, and then she had us do a final piece, which I did not bring along with me because it is actually really big and I was afraid that, knowing me, I was gonna drop it or something terrible was gonna happen and I did end up giving it to my mom as a Christmas present and I didn't want to bring it back in pieces. But what I did bring was this soap dish, I was gonna make it a butter dish, but it's not big enough, so if you want to see them...
That was big enough for the butter that I use.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Do you...
Can I take it?
Um, so that one's the butter dish, this one is sort of a small thingy and a gravy bowl, they are kind of heavy, heavier than you might think.
I think a Land O' Lakes stick of butter would fit in here, Madison.
That's kinda, that's really nice.
I think a Land O' Lakes stick of butter would fit in this dish, I'm just, I mean...
I hope so.
Maybe others would not.
Well, that's what's great issue, usually, we usually do pieces that are functional, so whether it's a vase or, my final piece was a big ceramic pasta bowl and we've already used it like three times since my mom opened it on Christmas, so that's...
And you did all the painting too?
Yes.
Wow, that's really good, the painting.
Thank you.
Glazing.
Yes, the two, the one that, the first two are just regular glaze and then the one that Mr. Bowers has is a technique called underglaze, which you actually do before it gets fired. And then when it comes out, you're able to kind of go over it with the clear glaze and it goes in again and comes out nice and shiny.
Excellent stuff.
So, thank you.
You mentioned the swim team, I remember when the swim team was first instituted, we had like three kids, remember? And it was like, it was hard to keep it alive and they had to get up at 6:00 in the morning and go and practice.
We instituted the swim team over 20 years ago by running a Las Vegas night, that's how we raised the funds to get it started and it's...
But now it's thriving.
It's really grown.
Yeah.
Do you know how the wrestling team's doing?
Um, I believe they're actually undefeated, yeah.
They're undefeated, thank you, I was gonna bring that up.
Now, they've actually lost, they've been in a few tournaments where they've come in second and third, but they dual meet...
Tournaments, dual meets, they're undefeated, I think.
Yeah, I'm wondering how long we're gonna be able to keep that...
They're 13-0, I believe.
Yeah, to keep that co-op.
Why do you ask?
Well, because it wasn't mentioned.
And this will be the last musical at the old high school.
Oh yeah?
This year.
That'd be true.
Next year, we'll have a musical where we actually have a sound system where people will be able to hear lyrics and hear people speaking their parts.
And we'll be able to stand up after they get up out of the seat.
Exactly.
And we'll be able to double price a ticket.
Yeah, the only negative will be you won't be able to bring your seat cushion home with you, which now when you sit down, normally, the seat cushion comes right with you and you can take it home, that'll be the only negative at the new school. Well, thanks Madison.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madison. Half-day school week this week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie.
Okay, should we move to Wayne? Okay, we have our annual facility report and tonight we have Wayne Hardecker here, I hope he has a toy to show us.
I do.
All right, to make his annual report, Wayne?
Nice to be here, thank you very much.
Say it.
I don't call them toys, but a couple of my instruments of instrumentation that I use, I'll pass them around. First one is my CO2 meter, you breathe into the, you will, if you breathe it's in the upper right corner.
Breathe into here?
Yeah.
Just breathe?
Yep.
Oh, .16 mill, that's not good.
I need a ride home, wow, someone needs to give me a ride home, who's the vice chair?
That's only CO2.
That was a trick, right Wayne, you didn't tell me, a little breathalyzer.
Oh my god, he's looped.
What that shows is we use that sort of to take the temperature or the, do a physical in a classroom, it tells us the health of a classroom.
I know Mrs. Willis...
Basically, by measuring CO2.
Mrs. Willis is going to talk about this issue later, was this used the other day at the middle school when we had the alarms going off?
That was CO.
Oh, CO, so that's...
CO.
Whole different thing.
Carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, there's a huge, I'm sure you know there's a huge difference.
Me? No, I don't know anything about science.
What should this be, Wayne, for reading of?
The new school, according to ASHRAE standards, which is a nationwide standard for measuring CO2, is probably in the 600 to 700 range.
Okay.
Most of our...
Better evacuated.
Most of our, well, just, don't be alarmed, but as far as, as far as, we try to maintain 800, that's parts per million, and it could go over to 1,200 to 2,000, depending on the time of day and, you know, we know what the numbers mean and if there's any cause but concern, but generally there isn't. If there is any cause but concern, we can adjust ventilation, but that's basically what we use sort of as a barometer or health condition of any specific classroom, just an issue in the classroom that we need to keep an eye on and that and other means we can measure. The other issue we, which we had at the middle school, was the carbon monoxide.
Right.
It was a result of construction going on outside the east side of the two-story building.
Right. But carbon monoxide has no impact on carbon dioxide levels?
No. Totally, totally independent?
All right.
Since we've closed up the vents in the middle school on the construction side, have you been monitoring with this thing?
We have installed, we are...
I know, we're just going to open the doors temporarily.
Well, what we've installed, well, the direction of the building inspector, we closed up all of the outside air vents because that, the whole area on the east side of the school is enclosed by the building.
Right.
And that's being heated by propane, but it's burned outdoors and all the warm air is...
We're just sucking that into the school.
Right, now what, the source of the CO is a pork truck.
Yeah.
And that has been taken care of. So we have 10 or 12 meters that measure carbon monoxide and it should be zero and most, now it is zero. Now, we've installed them all along that, almost every classroom at that wing and we measure them every day and the staff sees them and there's a reading on the meter and it should be zero.
Yeah.
And we look at them every day and they are zero, so that's a major factor. The issue between, well, when the fire department's there, the police department's there, we were there measuring and evacuating, exhausting the area and, you know, the issues went up, the just carbon monoxide went up and it quickly dropped off and it's been fine since, so.
Great.
And we're very concerned about that on a daily basis.
Right.
That's a major concern.
Yeah.
The other thing I brought was a kind of a low-tech item, but this holds the new school together. This is, this is an A325 bolt.
So one bolt's holding up this...
And you took it, so the...
The unique feature of this bolt is the knurled knob on the end, I'll pass it around.
So is this the bolt that puts the beams together?
That, there's thousands of those around that school together, thousands of them. The unique part of that, the unique part of that is the knurled knob on the end. Now, long ago, you would need a torque wrench to tighten up the bolts and to make sure they were the right torque. With that bolt, there's a device that tightens them up and when that knurled knob breaks off, it's at the right torque.
Oh.
It's probably in the range of 400 foot-pounds, it's a high tensile bolt. A325 bolts have been around forever, but that particular one is a...
So that actually, and the piece breaks right off?
That end will break off and when it walked around, when it was being put together, you'd see a lot of those little knurled knobs all over the ground. And the ironworkers would tighten up the bolts, the end would break off, it would be torqued up to the right torque.
That's pretty good.
It's kind of a low-tech, but it holds the building together and it should for a hundred years.
Yeah.
It's pretty cool, so. Okay, as far as my report, everybody should have a copy.
Yes.
We currently have 20 employees, we had 21, we're down to 20. About a year and a half ago, we lost one employee through budget restriction, through attrition, so one gentleman retired, he'd been with us for 40 years and we didn't replace him. Thank you very much, I gotta save that.
Put it back where you got it.
That's right.
That probably is like my necklace.
Build a microphone, no, build a whole microphone. So what we did is we, this is from last year too, but one of our highly skilled grounds people, we divide his time between building maintenance and grounds and that's worked out very well for us. So we have 15 school-based custodians, one and a half grounds workers, two van drivers that do all kinds of other duties and they're, but they're 17 rated van drivers, one and a half maintenance workers, the other, the main, one of the, no, I shouldn't say the main, but one of our key maintenance workers is our HVAC technician and he is very talented in plumbing, gas fitting, heating, he's very talented in preventive maintenance, we just finished cleaning all of the heating coils at the hood school and the heating coils over time have a tendency to clog, clean, 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 but they do have a tendency to clog up and they slow down the airflow and it does decrease the heating bill. And that's another thing we, we are diligent on preventive maintenance, that's a key to So, continue on. When the new middle school high school opens, we are in the process of making some major decisions. The new school will be 70,000 square feet large and will be handled now. We're anticipating in the fall, no, in the fall of next year, when the high school goes into the new high school, middle school goes to the old high school, middle school closes, really no employee changes, just to see how everything shakes up. We'll have a new building, I put some numbers down here as far as what a person would normally take care of on a daily basis. And these come from an industry standard, American School and University, for what a maintenance worker will be able to clean on a daily basis or maintain and what a custodian will be able to clean on a daily basis. We are generally under that number. A maintenance worker would maintain 92,000 square feet, all of our beliefs together is close to half a million.
Right now, it's half a million or with the new school?
Approximately half a million.
Okay.
And we have one and a half maintenance people. We hire, the only thing we hire on a normal basis is an electrician and that's on an annual bid basis and it's limited, but that's only outside contract we hire unless we have a need for another type of heating person to come in or alarm company to come in, a roofing company come in, but those are the exception, not the rule. So most of our maintenance is done in-house.
Well, we were regularly hiring HVAC people prior to this maintenance guy being brought on and I think that in the past years, you've quantified that that's really saved us a lot of money by bringing that person on it.
I hasten to say it, but he's probably one of the best people we've ever hired.
Yeah.
As far as, is what he can accomplish is what we pay him to do, you know, he's a go-to person, he works floating hours, very capable, very smart.
Great.
He searches out parts, we try to find some parts for older equipment that isn't even made anymore and he finds them and finds a place to buy them, it's pretty, it's pretty good, it's a pretty good system.
So when we have discussed, I know, going forward next year without adding personnel, however, it's, I'm assuming it's likely that the year following, you know, that'll be revisited and we probably will have to add personnel if we're adding 70,000 square feet.
Well, the way I look at it is the area we're adding is fairly large areas, they're large, wide open, like Main Street, Main Street will be large.
Right.
The gymnasium is large, high school will be gone, so I like to act, react but not overreact, I mean, do we need a lot of people? To be determined, to be determined.
Okay.
I use it, part of my reasoning is what we've done at The Bachelor, which is in its eighth year now, it's part of my report, but we're doing a little more maintenance now, we've lost a few motors, a few bearings, but nothing gigantic consequence that affects my maintenance budget, so if the new building, you know, three, five years...
Good point, so custodian maybe, but maintenance should be lower because it's, everything's new.
Yeah, that's where it went.
Gotcha. Yeah, very low maintenance for us here anyway, at least, yeah.
No, we certainly run a very tight operation with not a lot of extra people.
Right, okay.
So that's kind of the way of looking at it, knowing what a person would normally take care of in the course of a day, custodially and maintenance-wise, kind of judging how things shake out in the future, but we keep an eye on it on a regular basis, what do we need to be doing.
Okay.
The rest of it is part timers and things like that that we do over the course of the summer, nothing, none of that has changed. The buildings and grounds issues, we still maintain our 8% insurance premium for, we do interior quality monitoring, roof inspections, freeze-up prevention and facilities and self-inspections. We are progressive on that, proactive on that and I do my reporting and we get rewarded financially and also we get rewarded by taking good care of our buildings and I think that's part of it too. We have been very successful with pursuing our annual grants through the MYER program, approximately $20,000 plus we have been awarded over the course of last, I'll say five to seven years, or any number of things, some of which I listed, asbestos awareness, roof inspection program, infrared heat loss camera, septic system preventive maintenance program are some of the things we have pursued and have been successful through the MYER program. We just took delivery of a new 2014 F-450 multi-use truck, F-450 truck. It's the last snowstorm, we already worked around the clock flawlessly, one of our senior employees, Chet Spiny, drove it non-stop and it was a tremendous investment for us. The previous one was constantly breaking down for several reasons, this, it worked like a charm, so that really, the first couple of snowstorms, we worked flawlessly and proved it, proved the investment, I think, hopefully so. Specifically by school, the little school, and I hope the new school is as efficient it should be, there's three lock-and-burn boilers at that little school and we run it pretty tight, although maybe a little, sometimes a little too tight because the principal of the school says that sometimes it's a little chilly in the morning and the afternoons, but I run it, I run it close. And that's the key to that and is another reason why I pursued to go proprietary with the new schools, is to go with a system that I can manage at home on a computer, I can fine-tune it, I can change the heat settings, if it's warm during the day, it measures outside air and the boiler will cool down, or I can even cool down even more. Like today, I won't tell Chris Moly, but I probably shut it off at 2:30.
My measure in his way, as long as there's no icicles in the classroom, I think it's okay.
Those are condensing, those are condensing boilers and, and this is part of my report, but the new school have also condensing boilers, they're very efficient.
They're small too, right?
Well, the new ones...
But the ones in the little school are small.
They are, it's amazing what, how that boiler room has totally changed character, it was a rumbling, kind of grungy old boiler room, now it's bright, it's quiet, you don't even know they're running.
Yeah.
And it really is quite pretty, to me, it's pretty cool, so. Another couple of things we were successful doing was the retaining walls for the softball fields, which were in a bad state of repair this past summer, actually back into spring, actually back into last winter.
Right.
They were in, thought they were gonna fall over, but they could have fallen over and we pursued the mediation of that by going out for bid and we got a good contractor, a local contractor, he's got children at the little school, to rebuild three sections of wall about 100 feet long, a retaining wall, we reused a lot of the existing block, we added some new block, it's rock solid and anything issue about public safety, all the fencing was redone, we did some other arrangements to get, be able to get around the school better for plowing purposes and it was a very, a very positive experience. It worked very well, that was a real plus. Another constantly process is to abate asbestos and it, The Bachelor has no asbestos, the new schools will have no asbestos, the little school on the hood have asbestos, we, but we manage it very, very properly, we do regular inspections, every six months, we do the three year, a higher inspections, we manage it well in place, it is not a problem. But, a few areas that I've been pursuing to try to remove it, to get it out of the school, is at the little school and at the hood school. The nurses station at the nurses floor at the little school, some ceiling tiles in B wing at the little school, we removed it during the course of the summer and replaced it with regular ceiling tiles or regular floor tiles, so that issue goes away, so. But there are, there is other issues to deal with and we're dealing with it safely and responsibly, so. The hood school, we built a 20, 16, six foot by 20 foot enclosure in the lower wing for the staff, the exterior fire escapes out of the modulars, which are never used, but they have to be available for the building inspector, we had to get an engineer to take a look at them. Actually, the engineer that's working on the school project, our engineers design group, helped us to lay out what we needed to do and we had a quote and we got it done. We also did some asbestos abatement at the hood school in the kitchen area and that came out very well, cleaned up, re-tiled and the issue, it's gone away, so that's pretty good. Another area we had a problem with was the, some of the drainage up in back of the gym and the DPW, he does a good job helping us out, drainage and paving and broken paving and drainage issues and another thing that Glenn McKay wanted was he wanted his dumpsters enclosed and he put, he closes around his dumpsters, he hates his dumpsters, but they gotta be there.
Who likes dumpsters?
Nobody likes dumpsters.
It's a terrible life.
I say this, this is heavy for, The Bachelor school is in year eight of, is being rebuilt, year eight, which is hard to imagine. It consumes very little of my maintenance budget, we've had a few issues with, which I hope it don't, don't the new school, we have some units that are mounted in the ceiling, the heating units in the upper floors because of the shape of the building, they're difficult to work on, we've had a few bearing problems and some heating issues, but very, very limited. But as far as getting in there to do it, it has to be done after hours and we, it's very manageable. With the assistance, again, with the assistance of the DPW, we added 20, actually 21 parking spaces across from the Bachelor parking lot and that worked out very well. In the historic district, we had, we haven't done it, we put some trees up, we put black fencing up.
Curbing?
Curbing, it worked out well.
That's gonna, those spots are gonna work out well, those are gonna be helpful too with, for parking for events when the old high school is gone, those extra spots are gonna be helpful.
I wasn't crazy about that idea, but it seems to have worked out well.
Yeah.
Yes, it has worked out well. We, because of the shape of the Bachelor parking lot, we use across the field for snow storage, so when they put the fence up, I wanted to make sure we put two gates in, so we open the gates up, actually we use one of the old gates up at the hood school for the, around the dumpsters, we open the gates up, leave the gates open so we can move the snow across the parking lot into the field, the snow storage. It works out very well. In the gym, being year eight, we had a challenging, expensive issue about replacing the light bulbs in the gym. We got, put the Arm LD... We got, put the Arm LD, replaced them with T5 high-efficiency fluorescent tubes, which is what we have already done in the middle school gym. And we got a $4,000 rebate from, it was a $9,000 job, we get a $4,000 rebate, it's pretty wild. And they're, they're, I hope they think they're gonna be using the new gym, I think, new gym, the T5 high, high-efficiency fluorescent tubes. They're, they're pretty cool. Middle school, high school, we've had a couple of boiler problems at the high school recently, but, you know, we deal with it. The middle school, we need to keep heating now through this heating season, which is another two or three months. High school for another year and three months, you know, it's another whole year. We will keep it running, there will be no short change of anything, we take care of everything, there won't be any, the normal stuff we take care of, we have. Last summer, we recoded the gym floor, it came out, it came out nice. So the middle school will be operation, operation through this school year, high school through 2015, the summer of 2015. The building project, which I find is extremely exciting, I go through as often as I can because it changes so fast, and there are so many systems in there, it, it just, it just, to me, it's very exciting, it's impressive, to see the modern technology of how, how people, how, the modern, modern building, how they build it. The mason was, the mason, the home, whether you build masonry today, it's all, not, it used to be like staging, now it's all by, it's very efficient, very productive, and you know, the mason tried to work as rapid as he could to stay ahead of the freezing additions, with the way they staged it, and the way they put the mason, the mortar, and the, and the bricks, and the man up there working, and the whole thing jacks up at one time, it's just, it's just amazing how fast it goes up.
Yeah.
And, and another thing, I went to a couple of days ago, and to see the new heating system in a typical classroom, and it's called displacement ventilation, it is, I can't keep saying this, it's pretty cool, because all, all the ceiling track's in place, but you can see above the ceiling, and you see the air supply, the gas comes out, if it comes off the roof, there's no, there's no fans in the rooms now, like, you hear this fan running over here? New school, everything will be up on the roof. The warm air will come through a duct, it'll be teed off into floor displacement, we'll come out of the dis- ventilator's on the floor, very slowly, but warm, and it'll slowly cycle up to and, and be exhausted. So there'll be no noise, should be very efficient, so that's, that's pretty cool. The HVAC controls, we have gone proprietary, and I think it's a good idea. We have it at the, we have it at four schools right now, we don't have it at the hood, that's I'm working on that, too.
I think that's been requested, that's one of the requests for the capital projects.
It is, it is. And why, I, I'm trying to make this as seamless as I can, because the batch works so well, it's so efficient. When I come in in the morning, I can bring up the batch, like, the whole, the whole floor plan of the batch by room, and depending on the color code, you can see what's going on in the course of minutes, and that's what I'm trying to do with the new schools. So I think, I think we'll accomplish that. That, to me, that's a major accomplishment. All the new roof will be white, adhered rubber, highly reflective, very durable, another request we made, should be pretty cool. And the boilers, actually tomorrow, and I think maybe sometime in the morning, we may fire off one of the boilers, I think, that's what I was told, so that's pretty cool, too. Four million ETSU boilers, pretty, pretty amazing, but they are condensing boilers, high-efficiency, 96% efficient, you know, it's, it's rocking a Roman, it's pretty cool. Questions?
Questions for Wayne. Other than to say, great job again, the buildings look great, despite, despite the age of the high school and middle school, despite the fact that we're replacing them, your guys are keeping, keeping things up, as you said, you're not letting anything go, which I think is important. Again, I've, I've visited so many other schools and see how the maintenance isn't kept up, probably have holes in the ceilings and graffiti on the walls, and we've never had that here, never. Kathy?
If I may, through the chair, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Wayne as our supervisor of buildings and grounds, and all of the men and women that work for him. I think they do an extraordinary job, and I've had a chance to work in several school systems, and by far, North Reading School System's operation out of the direction of Wayne is outstanding, and I'd just like to publicly thank him for all of the work that he does, and for all the people that he works with.
And Wayne, I say this every year, and I hope your staff hears the comments from the superintendent, and from the chairman, and from the other members, but you and the staff do a remarkable job. I, Kathy's right, I, I've talked to people in other school districts who do nothing but complain about the maintenance and custodial staff, and no matter which school you go into, it's just, it's spotless, and you guys do a remarkable job, I, you know, we're very fortunate to have you.
It's a terrific place to work, it really is.
I'd just like to say he doesn't complain when I call him at quarter to five on a snowy morning.
I think Wayne thrives on that, to be honest.
He was, he was up at probably quarter to three, Kathy, so you're not waking him up.
I can tell when I wake someone up, and he's awake.
My normal reaction is, we'll take care of it.
That's right, absolutely.
Questions? Okay, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you.
Kathy, I actually had one question related to, Wayne mentioned modulars at the hood. What's the, what is the outlook in terms of, do, will we continue to have to use those modulars? We have some at the little, some at the hood, or with enrollment going down, will we be able to stop using those? I'm just curious, because they don't have an endless lifetime.
At this particular time, they're still in full use, so as our enrollment, if our enrollment continues to go down over the course of the next few years and longer, we will need to take a look at where can we take away some of those modulars, and which ones do we need. But I can tell you that particularly at the little school, our preschool program for the entire district is housed there, and they're in the modulars, and they're working very well, so...
But my concern is, though, at some point, those have to be replaced. What's the lifespan on those, 15 years, maybe?
I would say 15, so we're probably in the...
The ones at the little school, the one at the little school's been there for...
That's the oldest, the hood is probably 10, 5 to 10 years old.
So that's, that's why I asked, because it's, in terms of future planning and budget issues, that's something we have to think about.
It's a very good point. I think we probably want to put that on our radar, just to assess the current status and maybe do some projections for down the road.
They give, they give a little bit of a warning, that's when the roof starts to leak.
Right, leak, yeah.
It's a warning signal, yeah.
Right. Thanks a lot, Wayne, great job again. All right, I see we have Mr. John Bernard here. John's here for a couple of issues tonight. Welcome, John, happy new year.
Good evening, thank you, thank you, good to see you all, happy new year.
Mr. Bernard has joined us and will speak first on the proposed course of study change for 2014-15, and then he'll go into a high school overnight trip request.
Thank you, Mrs. Willison, good evening, everyone, happy new year to all of you. So as the superintendent said, the first, the first item I'd like to address is, is a proposed change to our program of studies for the coming school year. Actually, this would not take effect until, again, if you, if you adopt this proposal, would not take effect until the 2014, excuse me, 2015-16 school year, but we feel it's important to put this in the program of studies, as we have done in similar kinds of situations in the past, to give students and parents some advance notice on a change that may be coming. So, I believe the superintendent distributed to you a packet with an explanation of, of the proposed change, and there are, there are a couple of reasons why I believe it's important to include this in the program of studies for the coming school year. Essentially, there are mandates, state regulations that require high schools to have a, some sort of a physical education program requirement for students in all four grades, and that's not something that I believe we have, have been doing fully. You, some of you will recall that several years ago, due to budgetary restrictions, we needed to eliminate what had been the junior, senior physical education class. And then, a few years after that, we were able to, to reintroduce a junior, senior elective now called Fitness in the 21st Century, and that is a course that has run for a couple of years now, but it's my, it's my belief and my understanding that, that having just an elective course available to students would not satisfy state regulations. So because of that, I did a little bit of work over the course of the last month or so with some, some peer principals, and discovered that there are a lot of student, a lot of schools that are having difficulty meeting this, meeting this request of the state, but be that as it may, I found also that there were some schools that were doing some very creative things, and one of which, that was presented to me, was one from Manchester Essex Regional High School. And while I have adjusted some of what Manchester Essex is implementing in the coming school year, again, this is something that I'm not, I'm proposing not take effect until 2015-16, I do think it satisfies a few things. Number one, and probably the most important, is we would be fully, in my opinion, would be fully satisfying a state mandate. Secondly, we would be expanding our, I think it's really extending our philosophy that we, we believe in the total wellness of all students, and that this is a program that would allow for students that may typically not be involved in some sort of a physical activity to do so under the direction of the school. So I think for those two reasons, what I've outlined here is, is something that I feel is achievable, and also does do the, the due diligence on our part as a school district to satisfy the mandate that the state has issued. So, I'm not sure, Mr. Webster, if you want me to go through what this is for the public's benefit?
I think if you could just, kind of highlight what the, highlight what the options are for the juniors and seniors, that would be great.
Maybe just for informational purposes, we currently offer a program in grades nine and 10 that is a full-year course, where students take a semester of physical education and a semester of health education each of the two years, and they, they essentially break out by semester. What I'm proposing is, in the junior and the senior year, students would have four options to satisfy a physical education requirement for each of those years. And the four options that, that I've outlined here, to enroll in the, in the elective course that's available at the high school, the Fitness in the 20th, 21st Century course, that a student's participation in one of the interscholastic athletic teams would satisfy the requirement. Thirdly, and with the new school, that we're all very pleased about and excited about, and having a, what I believe to be a, you know, really a state-of-the-art weight training facility and conditioning room, will allow us to open that up to students and allow them to satisfy a requirement that we've put at 40 hours for the given school year. And similarly, students could take part in an off-site, off-campus fitness or exercise facility program at personal expense, and I listed some of the ideas that, that students could take advantage of if they wanted to satisfy the requirement with that fourth option. And again, that would be a 40-hour requirement over the, over the course of the school year. So, that's a little bit of an overview of, of what the options are. I think it's fair to say that because we are a little bit over a year out when this would actually take, take full effect, if it is adopted, it, it's likely that there might be some adjustment even to this language over the course of the year, and that I may be coming back to you next year when I do my annual presentation on the program of studies with some, some adjustments, when we've had some opportunity to kind of think it through, maybe even a little bit more, so.
Any questions, comments? Kathy, I, did you have a chance to talk to John today after I spoke to you?
I did.
I, I just want to raise that issue, and, back in October, November, there'd been some emailing back and forth on the mask, the mask email list, listserv.
Yes.
And there were people asking about this issue, that if you charge fees for your sports programs, can you count those classes, can you count that as credit toward the phys ed requirement? And there was an email from Mike Gilbert saying that you can't, and so I, I just was wondering what, because, because the Constitution guarantees a, a free education to everybody who wants.
Well, I, I would think the question would be the other way, if you're gonna use this, these interscholastic sports teams as credits, then you can't charge a fee.
Right, that's, that's the point, yeah. So, I just wanted to raise that, because obviously I don't want to get us into any kind of hot water down the road here, so.
The superintendent did, we did speak this afternoon, and she did raise the issue with me. I'm of the opinion right now that because it's an option that students could take advantage of, that it's, if it's, it's not the single, it's not the only option that they have, but it's one option that they could use to satisfy the requirement. Right now, we have a number of our students, we have a very high percentage rate of students participating in interscholastic athletics, that they would be satisfying the requirement, and it would not be the only option available to them, and that there are at least two and possibly three other options that do not have...
Interesting enough, though, one of the other options could also result in an expense as well.
One, one could, the fourth one.
Off-campus, yeah, so that could be an expense as well, so.
But I guess the, what, the wording that I have says that districts cannot charge a fee for any course for which it grants credit. So, if we granted credit for somebody participating on a team, then we're charging a fee for that. Now, does Manchester Essex charge fees, or...
They do.
They do?
They do.
And so they had to get approval to put this plan in place, correct?
In my understanding is that their, their plan has been approved by the state.
Okay.
And I have written verification of that from them.
Okay.
I, believe me, I completely understand the point, and, and it makes sense to me, and I think if it, but my interpretation of it is if it were the, if it were the only option represented...
It was the only, right, because we aren't giving them, they can take the elective course, or they can do the fitness and the, the weight training, so...
And the beauty of this is that the facilities that we have just lends itself to these types of programs.
I'm hoping so, yeah.
Between the, the, not only the auxiliary gym, but obviously the fitness center as well, and the size of the gymnasium, the learning spaces in there, there's gonna be all kinds of opportunities for, you know, different things.
And so just to be clear, this has to get approved by the state?
That's correct.
Correct? So, all right, okay.
It's part of the coordinated program.
For the coordinated program review that North Reading Public Schools will be undergoing in the fall of 2014.
So we have time, if, if they were to come back and say you can't do this because we're, we're another year out anyway, you'd have time to adjust and, okay.
But this does require a vote of the school committee in order for John to make a change.
That's, that's fine. Any other questions, comments? This time, we'll obtain a motion to approve John's new plan for our physical education program at the high school, beginning in 2015-16. Second. Motion by Janine, second by Jerry. Further discussion? Halls in favor? Aye. 4-0, 1 absent.
Thank you, thank you very much. And, I'm sorry, this is, well, it's the super, the...
Hockey.
Hockey trip for February?
Yes, please.
Yes, I think we have a packet from the superintendent on a request that came by way of the athletic office for our annual trip down to Marcus Vineyard for an overnight hockey tournament. We've, we've participated for several years.
Twelve years.
Is that what it is? Okay, it's as long as I've been here, and it's, it's a wonderful, you know, wonderful opportunity for our students, and I'm hoping that you would see that. I have nothing, nothing to add, other than the fact that we've had, it's, it's very similar to what you've approved in the past, and we've had very good success, and...
Never had an issue that I...
The hockey team is doing very well this year.
Yes, very well.
Very well, yeah, so they're looking forward to this with your blessing.
Any questions for, I think for Janine, this is a trip that the hockey team goes on every year, it's a tournament, I think it's at the end of the season, right?
Well, it's in February, January or February.
It's in the letter.
Yep.
And it's, it's probably at the very end of the season this year.
February 17.
Yeah, it is.
It started in 2000, so they've actually been doing it for, this will be the 14th year, so, yeah. Move to approve.
Okay. Question?
I guess, Mike...
Oh, we'll have a second then, you got, we want a second?
Oh, second.
Okay.
Okay. My only question is, this probably has to do with policy procedures, because it's representing North Reading, that's why they need permission, because it seems like the parents are kind of like taking care of the accommodations and...
I think it's because...
It's an active, it's a non...
Yeah, because it's a school activity, so...
It's our hockey team.
And we're in it overnight, too.
Yeah.
I just, you know, I kind of figured it had to do with that, but I just want clarification.
So we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? 4-0, 1 absent. Thanks, John.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard.
Kathy, we also added the agenda, I think, that John Norton was coming, is he coming in tonight?
No, it's canceled.
Oh, that was canceled, okay.
That is canceled, we had spoken with him on Friday, and he had indicated that the proposed 9% rate increase will only affect residential properties, therefore...
Which is good news.
That's really good news.
Because we were concerned about that, because...
Very.
Excellent, okay, great. All right, let's get back to the agenda, continue business, we have the school project update. Kathy?
Yes, the last secondary school billing committee meeting was held on December 17th, it seems so long ago. In terms of the construction update, since that last construction update was about one month ago, I think it makes sense to hear from people who have attended more recent weekly construction meetings, and those that have also been on site, including Mr. Menzio, Mr. Bowers, and Ms. Embriano, and I had the good fortune of taking a two-hour tour of tour of the project last Thursday. And again, it was no less than amazing. But I defer to school committee members to give you the update as far as what's taken place recently.
I didn't go to the construction meeting last Thursday, so I don't know if you guys did. I had to, I had to work.
And you probably didn't go to the one before that either.
The one after January.
After the snowstorm.
The snowstorm?
Yeah, I didn't go to it.
You've got to get your priorities.
I know. I know. I have, I've been to Lincoln Cliff, I admit it. I'll readily admit it.
Anybody? Cliff?
It's, it's continuing to move along at a very nice pace. The, the best part is that there's, there's a lot of the, of the academic wing that has actually got final paint on the walls and, and ceiling grids in place.
Ceiling grids are in place. That's a sign.
Yeah, that's a good sign.
What that truly means is that, that's a, that's a very far along, you know, very far along process, because those grids don't go in until everything above that has been inspected and found correct. So, we're moving along very rapidly. Most all of the windows are in. There's still those few in the front that I think on-site.
Yes, they are.
They're on-site? Because I didn't know if we were just going with the plastic.
They were, they were moving around with a crane this morning. I haven't seen it since then. But they, they may very well be putting those in soon.
What about the curtain wall in the front, Cliff? Why is that glass not?
Curtain wall, there's two strips down the outside. That's a, an adjustment strip. And they, when they get all the rest of it together, they measure those and make the glass for that.
Okay, so they're making it specific for that size.
That takes care of, you know, the tolerances.
Right.
Is, where the glass is very, very fine. So that's, it's going on. Most of the, a lot of the aluminum panels on the clear story portion are, are in now. Those are the panels that you'll see with the, with the writing on them. That's a protective sheet over the, over the panel. There's, most all of the blockwork inside is in place. They're still working a little bit on the wall of Main Street, along the gym, gym wall there. They're, we're tidying up a little bit more in the toilet and locker rooms associated with that.
There's a lot that, that's, that's an incredible maze in there. You can get lost in there.
You can truly get lost in that maze.
Yeah, you can, you can.
At, at least you can now, because first off, there's still stuff in the way.
Right.
There's constructed things in the way.
But there's locker rooms for high school, middle school, boys, girls.
All of the, the, the building is all heated inside. You, you go inside now, it's about 60, 60 to 65 degrees on a cold day. And so that's a, a very, very nice feature. The, the auditorium is, the catwalk is up. There's, the, the work in there is, is incredible how much has come, that's come along. So there's, there's enormous amount of progress, and we're, we're looking good.
They did take down those, the shades on Main Street on the lower level?
Oh, they did, those down.
Yeah, it looks nice.
Those are all, there may be some interest in taking the next level.
Well, the, the next level's, this is probably more for tomorrow night's meeting, but that has to be considered, because they took off the first two, and now it just looks.
Oh, they, they did take the first two off the top level, too?
They've done that mistake.
Oh, I thought they did.
It just needs, it just needs to be adjusted.
They look, they look like it's unfinished.
Yeah.
But the, the thing about it is, level one, which is actually the second floor, because they go ground, level one, level two, but level one is what Cliff's talking about. The classrooms on that, the whole, actually, the whole floor is well along. And then they go from there to the ground floor and the second floor.
The second floor, the, the top level.
Yeah.
Is very, very close.
Gets catching up, yeah.
The, the thing that strikes you the most is when you walk into one of the laboratories. And those look fairly large.
They are large.
As, as we watch it come along. But now they have the ceiling grid, at least a couple of those. And with the ceiling grid, what happens is you get the, the top comes down, and that looks like the walls go out. Those are huge.
They are big rooms.
They are big rooms. Wayne mentioned the displacement ventilation system. And one of the things that strikes you is when you walk into each of those rooms, is that there's this great big hole, a big rectangular hole, in two places in those rooms.
The walls, the walls.
That's where the air comes in. And the air, he mentioned the no noise, that is going to be, there's going to be no noise of air coming in. It's just going to come into those, those.
Because of that system, the HVAC work is extraordinary. The amount of HVAC conduit or whatever you call it, Cliff, is just, it's unbelievable. I mean, in every, and not just in the classroom area, throughout the entire building, it's unbelievable.
One, one of our secondary school building committee members, Danny McGinnis, is involved in HVAC as a, as a part of his, his work. And his comment last Thursday, as he walked through, is, he nudged me and he said, this is awesome, isn't it? It really is very, very nice work. And, and each, each element of it, I think, that's, that's the thing that's, to me, is important, is that all the things that nobody will see are being done so well. The, all of the electrical work, I've taken some pictures of it. It's, it's actually.
Well, let's see, wait to see when they put the switch on.
Well, it's artistic. You know it's going to work because of the high level of workmanship that's involved in the whole thing.
I mean, if people could ever just go in and see the electrical work, the wiring. It's, it's just, it's mind-boggling.
HVAC and the electrical work is.
Yeah, it's mind-boggling.
All of those systems that are going to make it work are being done so well. And the, the very, very high level of craftsmanship and the, the orchestration of all of those different trades, and their ability to work together and, and make the project go, it's going so well. You know, we've had, we, every so often, we get a ding from somebody about how it's a terrible project. Well, it really isn't a terrible project. It's a really an awesome.
Oh, you know, we don't even have to say that.
And it's, and it's going so well.
I don't know about any other members, but I've heard nothing. I haven't heard one negative comment about the way the school looks from Route 62 to Apax Street. I mean, everyone that looks at it is just blown away by it, you know? I'm so used to looking at it twice a day that, but I think most people that go by, they're just, they're, they're amazed by it.
I cheated a little bit last Thursday. I, right after the meeting, I did the tour. I had to go pick up my granddaughter down at the high school. And so we were kind of at the end of the line. And I, I took her for a drive up the, up the road.
Yeah.
And around to the back of the school. And the, the comments from her on the way up there.
Well, that's the thing.
The level of excitement was huge.
Yeah.
It was huge.
You can't appreciate, when you go up that access road.
Yeah.
You can just get the, the whole, you know, magnitude of the, of the project. It's so much different than looking at it just from the street level. It's just, just, it's all there.
It keeps on coming. The further up the road you go, the longer it seems like you're going by a building. It's, it's huge.
Janine, anything else?
He's cool.
The thing I, I think is cool, I was up, when I was up at the middle school on Friday, the stairwells, you know, where they have the gla, it's all glass, and there were, so you saw a couple of workers walking up the stairs. And I was like, this is going to be so nice for the kids with that natural light coming in there, and those big stairwells are going to be, I mean, you know, you wouldn't think, talking about stairwells is exciting, but compared to what we have now.
No, but the glass worked on the whole building so far.
Yeah.
Very impressive, very impressive, yeah.
Kathy?
Which is a great segue to the next point under the design update. The project is currently meeting criteria for 55 lead points, and that qualifies for the silver level. But we were also told at the last meeting that the architects would like to continue to push to obtain lead gold.
We actually are at 59 points.
Are we at 59 now?
Yes.
That's very exciting.
By the way, the difference between silver and gold is, does, we don't get anything for it.
No.
No, but it's, it's a right and honor.
We're environmentally conscious.
You do get something for it.
Yeah.
You get a bigger plaque.
Exactly. It costs more for a big plaque now.
And a lot more.
So we're one point away from qualifying for the gold. That's very exciting. I didn't realize we were at 59. At that meeting, the SSBC voted to approve the expenditure of the technology budget that is included in the total budget for the project. And the sum of that line is $1,644,000. There was one change order that was approved. That was change order 11. And then Wayne just touched upon an event that occurred last Tuesday, January 7th, but I want to address it in my report as well. There was an elevated carbon monoxide reading in the sixth grade wing of the middle school. All of the safety protocols that are in place were followed. As Wayne had mentioned, the origin of the gas was from a piece of construction equipment which has since been removed from the site and will not return. And as, as an added precaution, an additional six carbon monoxide detectors were purchased and installed in classrooms adjacent to the building project. In addition, per the order of the building inspector, the outside vents on the middle school facing the building project have been sealed. Levels were measured the next day and since then, and all readings have come back as normal. So we believe that the issue has been addressed. But it's nice to note that the protocols that we had in place worked. We received attention when we had exceeded those levels and we acted accordingly. And the next regular meeting of the SSBC is scheduled for tomorrow night, Tuesday, January 14th, beginning at 5:00 PM in the middle, in the high school.
5:30.
5:30. And all meetings now will begin at 5:30, as opposed to the 5:30 one week, 6:30 the next. All meetings now will be 5:30 in the high school modular cafeteria.
I think the other good news is, and I know they're, they're always fooling around the schedule, but we're pretty much on schedule for everything. I mean, there's a few things here and there, maybe a day or two off, but.
The, the only item that is, only part of the facilities that are showing up is, is negative float are the auditorium.
Right.
Everything else is on schedule, and they're working on finding a way to have the auditorium catch up.
Yeah, that negative float is not, it's not months or weeks, it's days.
Nine days.
Yeah.
Days.
Yeah. So.
But when I was on my tour, I made it known to the OPM that I, I have my heart set on doing the opening day speech in the auditorium for next year, so we'll see.
I'm sure that somebody is taking that into consideration.
Thanks, everyone. Okay, next we have, we're going to review the progress of the superintendent's evaluation goals. And this is, we are in the new, the new process for evaluating superintendent as prescribed to us by the state. So Kathy?
That's correct. So just for point of information, the school committee agreed to pilot the implementation of the new educator evaluation system with the superintendent last March of 2013. So the evaluation cycle will extend from March 2013 to June 2014. And just as a point of clarification, when an educator has been in a role for three or more years, that educator has the option of being on a two-year plan as opposed to a one-year evaluation plan. So this is a hybrid, but that's because it's a pilot, and so it's just fine. So the evaluation cycle, as I had mentioned, extends from March 2013 to June 2014. And instead of having one mid-cycle progress review, we built in two mid-cycle progress reviews, because it was a pilot and it's good to monitor on a regular basis. So tonight's review of progress is the second of the two goals reviews. And so in your packet, I included for you the form that has been completed that gives you an update on where I am in working toward my goals that have been included in my educator evaluation plan. And that plan can be found on the district website if anyone is interested in taking a look. All educators are required to complete a plan that helps them move through this process. So on the cover page of this goals progress report, you'll see a narrative, and that's an analysis of the work that has been completed as more of worksheet pages on pages two and three and four. Excuse me. So as I mentioned, I have five goals. The superintendent is required to have, as all educators are, a student learning goal, a professional practice goal, and then the superintendent is required to include several district improvement goals. And so for this first educator evaluation plan, I have three district improvement goals included. So on the cover page, you'll see that, I'm not going to read this to you, but I will just tap into some highlights. The first paragraph talks about the implementation of the new educator evaluation system. All educators are required to develop educator plans, and I'm happy to report that all educator and administrator plans are complete as we move through this process. So we have supervising evaluators that are actively engaged in the observation process, as well as being the facilitators of professional development as we move through this first year of implementation with our teachers. So then, I have also engaged in collaborative mini-observations with the building principals. I have two-hour meetings set up with them for every month with every principal. And during those meetings, for the most part, I am conducting mini-observations with them. And then after those mini-observations, I collaborate with them to talk about the evidence that we've gathered, when we're taking a look at what students are doing in the classroom, what educators are doing, what the impact on learning is, and what are some of those talking points that we would bring back to educators as feedback regarding what we saw and how this particular mini-observation fits into the bigger picture of teaching either a lesson or a unit. It's also a very important piece of calibrating what we're taking a look at and how we're providing feedback. So, and that's one of the goals that I have in my educator plan is for us to continue to develop our skills as evaluators in gathering feed, evidence and giving feedback to our teachers. So we're developing that common understanding of proficient instruction as it relates to the educator rubric standards, the indicators, and the elements. Then in that second paragraph, I talk a little bit about the analysis that was done of the MCAS data. And it was focused on the percent of students scoring proficient or advanced in all assessed grade levels in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. And as a result of that analysis that I conducted, in addition to analysis that Dr. Daley had conducted, it became clear that I wanted to focus my student learning goal on mathematics for this first round of implementation. And so, we're taking a look at how students are participating in mathematics in the classroom, and the data outcome is measured by the median student growth percentile score. So analysis of the 2013 MCAS math results indicate that the median mathematics SGP did increase in four out of the sixth grade assessed. And that was the benchmark that I had used in my educator evaluation plan for MCAS 2014. But as a baseline, I wanted to take a look at MCAS 2013, and that goal had been realized. So I was pleased to see that. But in at least 80% of the mini-observations that I have conducted in collaboration with the building principals has focused on mathematics. So it's been very interesting for me sitting in on a, an advanced placement calculus class and listening to the conversation that's taking place. And it's unbelievable. Our kids are pretty smart.
Did you get the differentials right?
No, I, I'm observing the instruction. The content is incredible.
Yeah.
Does bring back memories, but.
Bad ones.
Oh.
For, for, for we English majors.
Oh, my goodness gracious. In the third paragraph, I talk a little bit about NRPS 2016 and the work that we as administrators and leaders across the district are conducting through NRPS 2016. So we took a look at how we did in years one and two, and then we adjusted years three, four, and five to reflect the work that had been accomplished and the work that we're still looking to accomplish. So we have posted that revised NRPS 2016 that had been presented to you earlier this year on the district website. Anyone interested in taking a look at that can take a look at the entire plan. Most initiatives that are associated with the student services strategy will be somewhat delayed due to the temporary staffing that we currently have with our interim director of people personnel services and our assistant director of people personnel services positions since November of 2013. They're doing a wonderful job maintaining the work that had been started in the first two years. But with our coordinated program review taking place in the fall, with the move taking place this spring, with the new educator evaluation plan being implemented this year for the first time, and with them being new to the district and having to learn everything yesterday, we've decided that some of the initiatives that we had identified in NRPS that we would like to move forward, it's probably best to put on hold at this particular time so we can implement all of the other state mandates at a high level of efficiency and effectiveness. It's not a bad thing, but it's a reality. And I just think it's important for you to know that. And I'm continuing to work very closely with our director of academic services regarding the pilot and implementation of the district determined measures as required by the state that will be used in conjunction with MCAS to provide a student performance rating for educators in the next year of implementation of the new educator evaluation process. So that's the analysis of what you'll see on the pages of two, three, and four. What I provided for you on two, three, and four was the actual goal and some of the actions that have taken place to realize that goal. And I would say overall, everything is on target.
Yeah, I read, spent time reading through these today. I don't see any areas where you're falling behind. And in fact, I think in some areas, you're probably ahead of the game in terms of, given that this was an 18-month process. I really didn't have any questions. I don't know if anybody else does, but it seems like you're right on schedule. You know, I guess the one question I did have, and this doesn't directly relate to your goal, but it's, the plan here, but how many teachers are on the first year of doing, of participating?
of participating in the new education?
Approximately 50%.
So about half?
Yes.
And then the other half will come on next year?
Yes, next year.
And then some of those will be on a two-year, the newer teachers will be on a one-year?
One-year, yes. Until you have three years of experience in the district, you're on a one-year plan. It's called a developing educator plan, and it's true for administrators as well. So Kathy O'Connell, our middle school principal, is on a developing educator plan, but all the other administrators, oh, Michael Conley is on a one-year plan as well. All other administrators are on two-year plans, and all administrators were implemented this year. We did not do 50% this year and then 50% next year.
The other question I have is, you know, one of the concerns was the staff time required, both at an administrative level and at teacher educator level.
Yes.
You have any feedback on that?
Well, initially, anytime you do something new for the first time, it takes more time to do it. But as I indicated to you, as the last bullet under my first goal, I feel that the collaboration about teaching and learning is absolutely more focused, more intentional, particularly at the administrative level. And by doing collaborative mini-observations, it's a learning, it's an embedded professional development opportunity for us as well. We're absolutely making time to do this together. We're having very explicit conversations about teaching and learning right after we see it taking place in the classroom, and we're also coming up with talking points that the supervising evaluator will go back and share with the educator about what we observed and questions we might have about where does this fit into the bigger picture of that lesson or the unit of study. I find it, quite honestly, to be a better process than what had currently been in place. I'm actively engaged with the building principals. We're learning together, and we're using that information to really guide some of the work that will be done in the future regarding professional development around instruction.
Are you doing the same thing from the teachers?
Well...
Because it's kind, we did have a pretty intense process in place already in North Reading.
Yes.
So they're used to that. It's just changing the way they formulate their goals, et cetera, right?
The difference initially is that in the former process, it was a traditional process and a very good process, but you would go in and you would do very long observations once or twice over the course of four years. We're going in quite regularly for 10-minute observations, but regularly, so you're seeing more and different kinds of instruction taking place over the course of the year as opposed to longer periods of time. And then you're engaging in conversations with educators around what they're hoping to accomplish by doing what they're doing. The educator evaluation committee made up of teachers and administrators will be coming back together again in the very near future, and one of the first activities that we'll undertake is putting together a survey for our educators to give us feedback about the process. I can speak from my perspective, but it's important for us to gather data from the educators in the classroom. And so we'll have more information to share with you in the future, but that's one of the first activities that we'll take.
Any other questions, comments? Seems like you're right on plan.
It's interesting.
You get an A so far, but you've still got six months to go.
Absolutely.
All right. Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the school committee goals, or I think actually it was Mrs. Arquette at our goal meeting suggested we call this an action plan, which it really is. You know, one of the things that's interesting about the school committee is we only have so much say and sway over certain things. A lot of these things are, a lot of our actions or goals are dependent on working with the administration to make these things happen. I looked through all of these. I mean, there are some, I have some questions and I'll get to. You know, we have, I think we have, we have policy, goals, we have our actions, strategic planning, evaluation, communication, media. What else? Oh, no, wait, I'll read from the top here. Leadership and Governance, these are the main categories. Leadership and Governance. What else do we have here? Financial and Asset Management, Educational Program, and Family and Community Relations. And most of these is a half a dozen to a dozen action items. The one area I wanted to start, it's on page one under Leadership and Governance, and that's related mainly to policies. Develop and approve new policies is required. That's an ongoing process. I think we've already added a few this year. I can't remember which those are though, so I'm...
And I think they escaped me at the moment.
Yes.
I know that we had talked about doing social media.
We actually, we had to update the bullying policy to conform with the new state, with the new state regulations.
And then there was wording on another one to include in the ministry.
Right. But we have a, we have a policy subcommittee that meets on a regular basis, and so we're in good hands with that policy subcommittee.
We skipped the December meeting, and as a result, we are behind on developing our social media policy.
Right, I think that was what I was going to ask. I think the social media policy and the handheld devices policies are critical, and I'm assuming we'll be working with Patrick Daley on those because our plan for the new school at some point, hopefully, is to allow students, if we can work out a policy, to bring their own devices which can be used in classrooms, correct?
Yes. I can tell you that as far as the social media policy, we have a policy subcommittee meeting on January 22nd, and we've obtained the MASC template for our social media policy that the subcommittee will be reviewing.
Okay.
And then probably bringing back to the committee rather quickly. I'd like to just comment on the research and review handheld devices policies and guidelines. As you know, we have five student representatives to the school committee, and I meet with them during the afternoon prior to every school committee meeting. And as required by law, we're also, the superintendent is required to have a student advisory council, so they play double duty. So we do set goals with those students as well, and they have two goals this year, and they also have an action plan that looks just like the school committees. One of their goals is focused on BYOD and preparing for implementation of a pilot in the first year of the school opening. So they've invited Dr. Daley to a meeting in February, I believe it's the February 10th meeting, and he will come to talk to them about what are the steps that you need to take in order for this to move forward. And at that time, we'll start that conversation about gathering policies that are in place in other school districts to bring to the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee, then in turn coming to the school committee, and then what are some of the next steps that will follow on that. So the students are very much involved in this as well.
And I know that part of that technology budget was software that will enable us to have the security and monitoring in place that will be required for a BYOD policy.
Correct.
So I think we'll be in good shape there.
And the enormous amount of Wi-Fi that's available.
Right. It's incredible. Yeah. The one thing on this front page, Kathy, evaluate the implementation of the bullying prevention and intervention policy. I'd like to see, if the rest of the committee has any other suggestions, I'd like to see some sort of report from, do we have any kind of report that we submitted to the state in terms of, or do we have to submit something to the state in terms of incidents, how they were followed up, how they were dealt with?
Right.
If you could put together some sort of report, or I don't know if it would come from the principals or how that would work.
Well, I can tell you that Dr. Daley is scheduled to attend a school committee meeting on March 24th.
Okay.
And he's, at that time, we said that he would give a curriculum update as well as the bullying prevention and intervention plan.
All right.
And so we'll take, we can show you what was submitted to the state and what is required annually. Every year, they tweak the report a little bit, but I'll show it to you. He can also talk about the processes and the protocols that he's put into place to collect data around frequency of investigations at the school level and what his role has been over the course of this school year.
The other thing I'd like to hear is if there's, you know, have there been issues with parents and, you know, community involvement? You know what I mean? Not, obviously not specifics, but, you know, have we had, have we had issues that we've had to deal with because parents were unhappy with, you know, how we were implementing the bullying program?
Sure.
Or something along, along those lines.
The grievance procedure.
Right.
It's called a grievance procedure.
Yeah, I just want to get kind of an update on that whole thing, so that'd be great. Then moving, moving to the second page, the, we talked about NRPS 2016. That's ongoing. That's a budget issue every year in terms of, do we have the funds to implement, evaluate the food service program and recommend next steps? I'm actually working with Michael and with John Bernard. We've kind of got a mini-subcommittee. All of the proposals are in from, from four vendors, correct, Michael? And we're actually going to be meeting tomorrow, so that's in, that's in progress, and we'll definitely have a solution one way or the other for next year. We'll do the self-evaluation again. We just reviewed the first year of the educator evaluation system. The pilot, again, that's in progress, the pilot and Kathy's evaluation. Expand the number of school district budget articles in the patch. That's going to, and transcript, Michael's going to be working on that. You already had one article incorrect recently?
Yeah, I did an initial budget kickoff.
Right.
Article, and then I did talk about the capital plan, the capital recently, so...
I think, I mean, it only doesn't have to focus on the budget. You could also maybe an article on the whole new fee.
Yeah, you mentioned that.
The fee policy that we have, that we had adopted recently.
Right.
I know Kathy said you're working on something to rule that out anyway, so an article, right, so an article and a transcript in the patch might help with that. We've got the new cable show, although we've, I think only one episode's been broadcast, correct?
Well, we actually did another taping today.
So that's four?
Our fourth episode, and while we were there, we talked to the NORCAM faculty and staff, and they will be rolling out the second show, I think, next week. They anticipate the third show being rolled out at the end of the month, and the fourth, which we taped today in February.
Well, given that I'm the guest star on the third one, could you please show, give me every date, time that that's going to be broadcast?
Absolutely.
So I can make sure I watch everyone.
Jason?
Have you appeared yet, Terry?
I have not appeared.
You have not been asked to?
I have not been asked to appear.
Don't feel her, I mean, as a senior member of a school committee...
I was going to do a stand-up comedy routine anyway, so I...
We plan on having a building project show.
Yes, I think it's...
That would be a good, that's actually a good idea.
And you could intersperse some video and shots from that. I think at some point, every member of the school committee will probably be asked and should appear on the, it's a lot of fun.
Oh, absolutely.
I think the public's demanding a full 13 episodes.
Yes, they are. I think we already renewed.
I think, yeah.
Yeah. The ratings have been unbelievable.
We've got three in the can right now, and you know, ready to go.
Four.
Four.
Number of people watching.
Yeah, you have four people in the can are watching. So we have the cable show. One of the other things we talked about was exploring the use of social media to communicate school district news. I'm thinking that that will be part of the social media policy discussion, how we can use social media. I know that some of our principals are already using Twitter.
They are.
To communicate things going on at the school. I don't, you know, my bigger concern is Facebook and teachers and students and how they might or might not be using it, but I think that'll all be rolled into the policy.
Right.
So we really can't talk about communicating with social media until we have a policy in place. But I do think, I know the superintendent's reluctant to have a Facebook page. Do you have a Twitter account?
No, but I, I did my first doodle.
What's a doodle?
I've been doodling the last hour.
Jerry, thank you. But that's with a pen. Is that something to do?
It's a scheduling application, a tool.
Oh, really?
A tool.
For a group to, you know, pick common availability dates for...
Oh, okay.
I just learned how to do it, and I just used it last night.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, great, and Google Hangouts, which I use with clients, once you have a Google Plus account, you can, everybody can just be in front of their computer and you can have a meeting.
Yes.
You won't have to come here anymore.
Yeah, I see everybody's using paper now too.
Yeah, Jerry, we're back to the stone age, but, and actually, the thing, interesting is NORCAM can actually broadcast using Google Plus if we're using that. So, so we're moving ahead with the social media policy. You said we're moving ahead with that.
Yes.
They'll be looking at examples the next time of social media policies. Adequate staffing for the instructional technology integration, that's part of NRPS 2016. There'll be something in the budget.
FY15.
FY15, so that's in progress. Some of this stuff, Michael, I don't know where we are with this, identifying staffing necessary to carry out increased data reporting, new software. Are we moving a lot? Is any of that be in the budget for 2015 or no?
Well, no. Right now, in the second bullet, we decided that we're going to share that responsibility among the current administration and staff due to limited funding.
Okay.
We're just going to continue working on that internally.
And the new software, you know, research is underway, but it's, we decided to hold off at least another year for the capital.
Okay.
To continue to investigate the best option.
Okay.
It's in FY16 in the capital plan.
Yeah. Okay. Next page, under Leadership and Governance, create a web-based internal school committee repository for documents and articles. That's been established, a Dropbox account. Then, of course, with the secondary school building project, we've already done all of these with informational sessions, et cetera. We've accomplished everything under that goal. And switching to financial and asset management, approve a budget, which we will start working on soon, and I'll talk a little bit about that when we talk about the finance planning, recent meetings, finance planning team, work with the OPM. We've already worked with the OPM. We've been presented with the increased operational costs that we're expecting for the new school, and that's been, that'll be worked into next year's budget. Food service program we talked about. Discuss the financial impact of unfunded mandates. We're having, we have ongoing discussion on that, so that's an ongoing thing. And then we have the finance planning team, which we continue to collaborate with Tom Boards, and again, develop a school district budget that's supported by the finance planning team, the finance committee.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just have something to share with you regarding the financial impact of unfunded mandates. This just came to me today, so I'd like to pass this out to you if I could, and this may change some of what's on the action plan. Last June 27th, about 85 superintendents attended a hearing of the Joint Education Committee, and 10 of those superintendents testified that unfunded mandates and unnecessary regulatory and an unnecessary excessive regulatory climate was increasingly a burden to the successful operation of school districts. So there was a request from that particular hearing to have a study of educational mandates with the purpose of streamlining, consolidating, or eliminating mandates and reporting requirements. So today, I was informed by MASs that the Joint Education Chairs released House Bill 3722, an act establishing an educational mandate task force, which addresses much of what they were requesting. And so we are asking that as people have conversations with legislative representatives, we urge them to support this bill, and the language of the bill has just been distributed to you. Under Section 1, it talks about this task force and who will serve on the task force. There will be a representative from MASc, your association, as well as my association, as well as Michael's association, as and other administrators, principals, and they will take a look at what those mandates are. And so the paragraph under Section 1, the second paragraph under Section 1, talks about identifying and reviewing state laws, regulations, administrative directives that require school districts to prepare and submit reports and submit data to the department, and they want to figure out where those redundancies are and eliminate those redundancies. And when there's a request for information from multiple departments, that there's one place where those departments can go if that information has already been submitted, instead of asking us to submit the information over and over again. So I'm pleased to see that this act would establish a task force, and they have a timeline within which they need to work, which would extend no longer than one year to present their findings and recommendations to the joints, the two chairs of the Joint Education Committee.
Interesting, this is very interesting because there's 11 members. Two of the appointments are by the House Minority Leader and the House and the Senate Minority Leader, both of whom are our representative in our state senate.
That's correct.
So that's, that's really interesting.
It is. It is, very interesting.
So it's Brad Jones and Bruce Tar are going to be appointing two of the 11 members.
So there's, there's no docket number here, but if you're talking to...
I think she said 3722, didn't she?
3722.
The action resolves of 2001, 14, probably.
If you're talking to Brad Jones or, you know, Bruce Tar or any other of our representatives, urge them to pass this bill, an act establishing an educational mandate task force. Very helpful.
So my question then to the committee, you had indicated this action of discussion, discussing the financial impact of the unfunded mandates. I'm not quite sure if you still want that information in light of this taking place. I know it's two separate...
I would still like to see a good, a good estimate of how much we're spending on unfunded mandates.
And I believe, Cliff, you told me that the suburban coalition had amassed this?
We put it together. I think the data is now starting to get old.
Yeah, it is.
Because we're, you know, we're years off from when the data that was available, which wasn't the current data.
Sure.
So it's, it's getting old.
May not be a bad idea for our committee to forward that information to Representative Jones. Jones and Senator Tar, too.
Right.
Just for their.
I mean, I know we have a lot going on, and I don't want, you know, Michael and his staff to spend days and hours and days on this, but if we can get some sort of, because there are lots of different unfunded mandates, right? So you have to qualify, what is an unfunded mandate? Is the fact that the state reimburses only, you know, I guess this year was seventy percent, seventy percent of a special ed education tuition, but that's above forty-something thousand dollars, with the district paying the first forty-two thousand or something. To me, that's a partially unfunded mandate, when you, when you think about it. The state and the federal government should be funding more of that cost, and the district shouldn't have that burden. So if you, you know, you have to look at it, I guess, a lot of different ways, what are the unfunded mandates?
If the suburban coalition has already put together a template.
Oh, right.
Can we access that still, Cliff?
I think I passed that on to.
Oh, did you?
I haven't.
You know what you can do, contact.
Dorothy Presser?
Dorothy Presser, she's the, I think she's the chair of the Lynnfield School Committee.
Yeah.
And she's, she's the head of, of the suburban coalition still.
She's not president this year, but.
But she'll have the.
But she knows all of it.
Yeah, she'll have the data, she'll have the template and the data that they looked at.
And we can just take a look at that data.
Yes, I have a report dated 2009.
Yeah.
And that was done by the MAS S., I believe.
Okay.
So that's, again, it's probably a little outdated.
But what'll be interesting, if we see what, as Kathy said, what categories they were looking at.
Correct.
And we can just plug our numbers in to those categories.
I would have sworn I sent that on to you, but if I haven't.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that as well.
Whatever, I'll, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
It's an Excel file.
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay, thank you.
Then, moving on, on curriculum, under educational program goals, curriculum, instruction, and assessment, all of these are ongoing, we're on a regular basis, either Kathy, or principals, or program directors are coming in and providing us with data in terms of where we stand on all of these various issues, test scores, SAT scores, the Common Core, we've had presentations on basically all of these things.
Yes.
That are under the curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Professional development, I think the budget remains an issue, will always remain an issue in terms of, we could always have more, but I think we've done more in the last few years, we've moved from half-days to full-days, which are more effective in terms of professional development for our educators, and I think we're moving along nicely in that area. Under instructional technology, again, it's a budget issue, we really do need a technology coordinator to work with and under Dr. Daley, because right now, he's handling two roles, he's our technology coordinator, and he's our curriculum director, and in addition to other things. And, you know, that's something I think is going to be presented to us in next year's budget, which is going to be a challenge, but it's something we really have to seriously consider. And again, these are all staffing issues, and again, all budget-related in terms of technology. I guess the good news with the technology is, there's a pretty good-sized technology budget for the new school, and the infrastructure is going to be there for us to do a lot of things that we can't do today. Let's see, we've talked about family, family and community relations goals, we talked about the cable TV program, which we've done, we talked about increasing awareness for the budget, which is already ongoing, and the financial issues. One of the things we had talked about, and I don't know what, what we can do here to move this along, was identifying strategies to get more feedback from the community. Remember, we had talked about that? It initially started with, let's have some lunches and coffee clatches and breakfast with, and invite, you know, parents to come and ask questions. Then, actually, I think one of the things that Karen had suggested was, when we do our visits to the individual schools, maybe in advance, ask the principal, you know, to ask the parents who are going to be attendants if they have any specific things they'd like to see addressed at our meetings when we're going to be at those schools. I think that was actually one of the things we talked about. I don't know if that's possible to do that for our last few school meetings, where we still have the hood, we still have the little, and we still have the middle school, right?
Yes.
So, you know, if there are going to be parents there, if they have any issues they'd like to see us discuss, either related to the specific school we're at, or to education in general in North Reading, I think that would be interesting, they could provide the feedback to the principal, the principal could get it to you, and you could determine whether it's something that made sense for us to address at the meeting or not. You know, there may be topics submitted that aren't appropriate for us to deal with, but I think it gives, it gives another opportunity for the, and I think, I remember when Karen and I were discussing this, that was one of the things we had talked about doing. So if you could maybe, for, when's it, is the next one the middle school?
It is.
And that will be next?
February, January 27th.
Next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So maybe if you can talk to Kathy and see if, I don't know how many parents are going to be involved, but she could actually, I mean, it doesn't have to be parents that are going to be there at that meeting.
Right.
Any parent that has an issue that they'd like to see us discuss and address.
Sure. We'll work on that.
Great. Community partnerships, assess community partnerships currently in place across the district.
I have not done that yet. I know, I will.
We probably don't have that many, right?
Oh, no, we have quite a few, but it would be, it's a matter of me gathering that data from the building principals.
Because I think one of the things that we wanted to see if there were more that we should be.
Correct.
Trying to establish, okay. So now you get, that's one, you've just lost a bonus point on your evaluation process we just went across, but we'll let it slide for now, all right?
Fine.
We'll let it slide, we're not going to hold you to it right now.
Okay.
And then the last, the last two goals, under family and community relations, are, this is part of the same thing, how other districts are developing community partnerships, part of the same thing we just talked about, and then we're going to have a presentation, we want to have a presentation from the regional school.
Yes, and Mrs. Diamond will be attending the February 24th school committee.
Excellent.
That is confirmed.
Okay. One thing that would be interesting and ask her to address, and there may not be, there's been a lot of discussion about the need for a new facility down there. I mean, if there's any talk that, you know, has been publicly discussed at their meetings, it would be great if we could know about that.
Sure.
Because at some point, it will have an impact on us financially, although, looking at the funding for the school in Middleton, I can't believe how large a percentage of that is being covered by federal and state grants, and I'm assuming with this school, and given that a lot of the communities that attend are urban communities, I have a feeling we'd get a lot of state and federal reimbursement for that, for that school.
Yeah, I think that the school in Middleton's a little unique, and then I think they're getting money from the agricultural aspect of it, too, but.
Yeah.
I would think there would be a lot of reimbursement for.
Right.
A new vocational school.
Yeah. Okay.
Are there any other topics that you would like Mrs. Diamond to address while she is here, so we can give her a heads up?
Talk about our enrollment there, how many students there.
Some stats, what we're paying.
Right, what are we paying?
We should know that.
Yeah. I know that comes out of the, it comes out of the town budget, so it comes out of fixed costs, so, well, still, it's everybody's budget.
We own the town.
Right, I was saying, it's everybody's budget.
And I know that they have a new principal, the last time that she came, she brought the principal, I anticipate that she'll do that again.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. Is it a principal or a superintendent?
Superintendent.
A superintendent.
Well, they have both, they have a superintendent and a principal. I know the superintendent retired, I don't know, it was a year ago.
Yeah, because he came here with.
Jay Groll.
Superintendent Director?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions or comments on the goals? I think we're, you know, we're in good shape. Obviously, a lot of our time has been focused, as it always is, on the budget of the new school and academic progress, and we seem to be doing well in two of them, and the budget is always, is going to be a challenge, but we'll, we'll get there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Next, 2000, 2014 school calendar change requests.
Yes, thank you. The elementary schools are working with a mathematics consultant, and there is an early release day scheduled for, I believe, May 2nd, Friday, May 2nd, and we've come up against a scheduling challenge where we're requesting, and we did this last year as well, we're requesting that the early release day be moved to Friday, May 23rd, as opposed to the current schedule for Friday, May 2nd. And this is for the purpose of professional development, it's important that we bring all of our elementary teachers together, and the focus is on mathematics at the elementary level, so I think we still have enough time to give parents a heads up, it's not a full day, it's an early release day, so, but we're requesting a change to the calendar from May 2nd to May 23rd.
You've got more than four months.
Are you talking?
No, this is this year, that's, that's next year.
I was going to say, you're talking Saturday dates.
No, that's next year.
No, that's next year.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that, anybody have any problem with that? Any questions on changing the early release date from May 2nd to May 23rd? We need to take a vote, right?
Yes.
Kevin motion for that, please?
I'll second.
Motion by Janine, second by Cliff, for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, four zero.
Thank you.
Okay, next, the schedule for the Pupil Personnel Services Director search.
Yes. As you know, we need to commence our second search for the position of Director of Pupil Personnel Services. We did have a search that was unsuccessful last year, we were very fortunate to find a highly qualified, retired Director of Special Education, Pupil Personnel Director, and Dr. Valerie Ardi Flynn, she is here for one year, so it's time for us to launch the search process for a permanent person to fill that position. And so in front of you, I have put forward the search timeline, and you can see that we would be posting the position on January 29th, and we would have that posting open until February 28th. We already have an interview committee established, Dr. Patrick Daley was the facilitator of the original interview committee and process, and he will again be the facilitator for this interview process. So once I, after this meeting tonight, he will begin the process of identifying each of the committee members, to ask them if they will again serve this year. It was a good mix of representation of school personnel, as well as parents, so we'd like to continue with that. There's a little internal process where the committee comes together to take a look at interview questions, and the, there's an application review process that would take place in early March, once that window closes for advertising for the position. You can see that there are administrators involved in the application review process that includes the superintendent, Director of Academic Services, all five principals, and the Director of Finance and Operations. Interviews will be scheduled, and we're hoping to conduct interviews in March, March 25th, 26th, and 27th. Following that last interview, there is a deliberation process where finalists would be named, and then those finalists would return to the district and meet with the entire administrative council. We may conduct site visits to those finalists' schools, and so we've identified a window of time when those site visits might occur, and then we would bring a recommendation, I would bring a recommendation forward to the school committee for the Monday, April 28th school committee meeting, and the school committee appoints for this position.
I know we've had this discussion before.
I still have an issue.
And I, I know we have, we have a disagreement on this. I don't understand why the school committee does not interview this position, given that it's a district-wide position. And, and looking at the state law, it's hard to, it says, "A school committee with less than four thousand children enrolled in its school system shall appoint a person to be its administrator of special education," et cetera, et cetera. I don't understand, if we're, if we're charged with appointing this, why person, why we don't interview that person, I just.
Because you're not hiring, you're appoint, you're appointing, as opposed to the Director of Finance and Operations, where that person actually reports to the superintendent, but also reports to the school committee, the.
Are you making that up?
No.
[laughing]
The Director of Finance and, I mean, the Director of Pupil Personnel Services reports to the superintendent.
But I think.
Appointed by the school committee.
Now, I looked at the wording today, and I think it said, "We appoint a business manager, not."
There's actually no language, it has to do with the length of the contract that the school committee settles.
Six, maximum six years.
And, and because there has been some case law around how that plays out with the school committee, just the mere language of the school committee being involved in determining the contract infers that you have jurisdiction over that position in the hiring process.
It just, it, I'm not questioning what you're saying, I'm not questioning your judgment, nor the fact you're going to have a great committee, that it does the interviews, the administrators are involved.
Sure.
It just is difficult for me to appoint someone to a district-wide position who I don't have a chance of meeting until they come before the school committee that night. I don't, I don't.
Well, again, I have no problem with a member of the school committee sitting on the whole interview process.
Maybe that's a solution.
Where as transparent as can be.
No, I'm not, I'm not questioning the transparency. I, look, close, close voluntary, I'm just.
No, but I do think we're getting into semantics here, and, and it just seems to me, I mean, the distinction between appointing and hiring, you know, it, it seems to me to be just a rubber stamp, then, if you're going to come in and recommend somebody, you know.
Right, how can we say no, we don't even know the person?
Well, I could say no.
Well, no, I know, you can say, but, but, you know. Unless we do our own research.
Sure.
And it's the only district, yeah, the assistant position, but it's the only district-wide position at that level where we don't, we, we hire the superintendent, we interview the business manager, but this person, we don't, and I just don't.
Do you want me to obtain any clarification from Mike Gilbert?
I'd like it, I mean, I'll, I'll vote to approve the, I don't have a problem with the schedule, I would like to get some sort of clarification.
Sure.
On that.
I can do that.
Okay.
I can ask Mike, because I'm going on what's been told to me, but maybe Michael can provide more context.
And if he, and if he says, "You're right," that's fine, I think it might be a good idea to have someone sit on the interview committee, and I'd be glad to do it if that makes sense.
Volunteered me.
Since Cliff already volunteered me.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Can you make all of those dates that are on there?
I can make any day.
I will add the school committee chair to the interview committee.
Thank you.
Does that solve the problem?
Well, no, I'd also like, it's up to you.
I just care.
I would still like to hear what Mike Gilbert has to say.
Sure.
That said, I'm fine with moving ahead with the schedule, so if someone wants to.
I don't know that we need a vote on that, do we?
No, it's just a point of information.
Okay.
I just wanted you to know that it was taken.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Now I'm going to give you more grief on the next thing, draft of the 2014, 2015 calendar.
So included in your packet for the purpose of discussion, unless there are no questions, we can move it forward for a vote, but what's included for you right now is a draft of the 2014, 2015 school calendar. So the administrative council works with me to develop this calendar and present this first draft to the committee. So just as a broad overview, school would start for students on Thursday, September 4th, and the 185th day would be Wednesday, June 24th. Orientation Day, also known as the Welcome Back and the Building Meetings Day, would take place on Wednesday, September 3rd, and the first full professional development day would take place on Tuesday, September 2nd. The second full day for professional development would take place on Friday, October 10th. Some of the justification for the professional development being front-loaded on those two full professional development days at the beginning of the year has to do with the building project. By doing so, we were considering providing an, an awful lot of professional development around the new technology systems that will be in place at the high school at the opening of the next school year. And it's not exclusively for the middle school in terms of professional development, it's also wrapping in the middle school, but it's providing an opportunity for teachers to be actively engaged in the technology that will be available to them when the students walk through the door in 1415. Now, we will be providing some professional development in the summer as well, but we, you know, those are optional. People have plans during the summer, some people are working, other people are doing other things. By providing this first full professional development day on that Tuesday, it allows us to really provide some options regarding professional development of the new technology. So there'll be some choice involved for teachers, and then there'll be some professional development that will involve everyone regarding that new technology. In addition, it provides an opportunity for us to, again, bring our elementary educators together to continue with their focus on elementary mathematics, working with that education consultant prior to the opening of the school year. By having the second professional development day in October, October is just close enough to the opening of school to continue with the professional development that we have begun at the beginning of the year in preparation for the rest of the year. It also allows us to do some troubleshooting around what's been in place and gives teachers experience with some of the new technology in the new school, and it gives them an opportunity to ask questions for more professional development in areas that they decide after they've had a chance to engage with some of the new systems that will have been in place in the new high school. So that's some of the justification around why there'd be such a very, there'd be such a change regarding the first day of school for students.
Questions and comments?
Sounds good to me.
I'm good with it. I hate starting on a Thursday.
Yeah, I'll tell you this, Mel, though, I mean, if nothing else, it maybe buys us a couple of days in a rush to get...
But I need to ask the question. In previous years, we've had that professional development day the week before.
Yes. In the teacher's contract, the professional development day cannot take place prior to September 1st.
I really hate starting on a Thursday.
Labor Day is September 1st.
I'm not that concerned about that.
It's the earliest labor day we can ever have in a school district.
I'm okay.
I, I'm...
If it's a Thursday, it doesn't seem like that makes an awful lot of difference.
Well, Thursday, it's like you're coming in for a two-day week, and then you're on the weekend again, and I, it just, I, I, I'm getting to the point, and I wouldn't get a agreement with this committee, I, I'm really starting to serious believe we have to look at starting before Labor Day.
September 1st, yeah.
I, I just, I just think we, we, it'd be much better, you get the kids out earlier, and I, I, I just, starting on a Thursday, just, I don't like, but... So their contract, it's because the contract says they cannot have a, we can't have them have a professional development day before September 1st. You okay? So I guess no one else has an issue with that, so I guess we can move forward.
I wouldn't be bringing it forward to you if it didn't have to do with opening up a brand-new school and providing an opportunity for some really targeted professional development.
Well, that's another question I have. Given that we're moving into a new school, you know, we used to, I think, I don't think we did it since you've been here, we used to have the freshmen go to the high school for the first day, and they were the only ones that went. And then everybody came, remember that?
Yep.
And then everybody came, and that was, we did that every year.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's kind of a luxury, and it's a nice thing to do, but I don't think it's needed.
Well, it's, the only reason why you could do that was because your student's school year was longer than 180 days.
Yeah, right.
You had a 182-day calendar, I think?
Yes.
And so you could stagger the start. You cannot do that when you have 180 days for everyone.
Because we cut it back to 180 for budget reasons.
And it has to be 180 for everyone.
And that goes back a ways now, Mel, too.
Even for the seniors, I mean...
For everyone. The seniors, there's some leeway between the graduation date and the last date of school.
Because what I, I was thinking with a new school, does it make sense to have everybody there on the first day, or would it be nice to kind of give the freshman a little, I guess everybody's gonna be new to it, so, um, and what are the plans, I, I don't know how much leeway we're gonna have in terms of when the school's gonna be available, but what are the plans to get the students into the high school ahead of time to start familiarizing themselves with where they're gonna be going? None?
No.
How about the middle school at the high school? The middle school kids moving down to the high school? Will we have some sort of orientation for them before school starts? Because you know how we have a move-up day?
Yes.
For the middle schoolers who are going up to, for the, you know, the elementary kids going up to the middle school?
Right, right.
Will we have any of that stuff?
The move won't have taken, that, we won't have the middle school teachers into the high school prior to the end of the school year to even know where the classrooms will be. We know where they're going to be, but it's still gonna be occupied by the high school teachers and the high school students.
No, what I'm saying, over the summer, or like, we can't do anything.
We haven't had those conversations yet. I'm sure Kathy, she already does a scavenger hunt.
That's what I'm talking about.
For the si-, the incoming sixth graders.
Right.
So there would be that, but everybody's going to be new to the high school next year. It's not just the incoming sixth graders, it'll be the seventh and the eighth as well.
Okay.
In fact, you know, if, if we were really thinking fairly logically about this, you might move the start of the professional development day to the 4th, and do the 4th and 5th with the professional development day, and orientation day, start the kids on the 8th.
I'd be better with that.
I, I was thinking the same thing, Cliff, but you're gambling a little bit there.
Yeah, snow days.
But I, I thought the same thing, that would be nice if we could do that.
Just to give that...
It would give us a couple of extra days in that high school, too.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I would be concerned about snow days.
Yeah, I was, that's what I was concerned about, because you...
Talking of snow.
So...
All this year.
So you're talking...
I was looking at that, too, Cliff.
But, so it's, right now, it's, right now, it's June 24th with five snow days, right?
Right.
So if you move it to the 8th, we're talking June 26th.
Yeah.
With five snow days.
And then a Friday.
I, I think, given...
It's a one-time thing.
Given what we're doing, not only with the new high school, and moving all these middle school kids to the old high school, I, I think a couple extra days to get everybody, I think that would be, especially to get more things completed at the high school that might have to be completed at the last minute.
Okay, so help me understand this, let me just make sure I am getting this straight.
I'd be in favor of that, too.
Bring the students back on Monday, the 8th.
Yes.
And then we'd still have a Welcome Back Day, the Orientation Day.
Orientation would be in the 5th.
And professional development.
And the 4th would be professional development.
And the 2nd and the 3rd?
Would be nothing. We're not...
Space.
Okay.
Are you uncomfortable with that?
It's a recommendation, I mean, just, if you're not comfortable with it, say so. I, I like it, only because we don't know what we're, we're dealing with here.
Right.
And, and I think it's a unique opportunity with Labor Day being so early, too.
I'd deny that in front of...
But we started on the 7th this year. Didn't we start on the 7th this year, or last year? When, remember we had the latest that Labor Day could be? Was that this year or last year? I think it was last year.
It was last.
Yeah.
I'd deny that in front of the construction manager and everybody else, but...
No, but I think giving us a few extra days is, is probably smart, given what we're...
You would move the last day to the 26th of June.
Right.
And that's includes your five snow days.
But if there's no snow days, it's, it would be June 19th.
And, and if we had an extraordinary situation, we'd have two days the next week before July 1st, if we needed more than five days for snow.
Which would drive everybody crazy, but...
It's a risk, but I, I would rather err on a few extra days for the new school. You don't like it, I can tell.
No, 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 I'm processing it. It's not that I don't like it, I'm just trying to weigh the advantages.
Well, there is that concern if we have an extremely, but if you have an extremely snowy win- winter, there is some chance you get a waiver, right?
No. The commissioner has made it abundantly clear that if we have snow days, you still have April vacation.
Right.
You take that away.
Well, that's, there's your answer. Take your vacation away.
The 4th of July isn't until Saturday.
Well, the 1st, once it...
You got a whole week.
The teacher's contract, the teacher's contract, they can't work out on the 30th.
They can't go beyond June 30th.
Right?
It's a new fiscal year.
Right.
But I think, obviously, you're gonna be able to assess a terrible winter well before the April vacation.
Right.
That's correct.
And we might have to make a modification there.
It's just a thought, I mean, for you to think about.
Would we have to get permission to start late like that?
No, you can stop.
From the state?
You just have to make sure you have 180 days, 900 hours for elementary, and 990 for the...
I, I think it's, I, you like that idea?
Yeah.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with having the, the first two days of school be on Thursday and Friday.
I don't either.
You do.
Yeah.
I think if you're, if you're prudent, you provide a little bit of flexibility in the system, especially where we're starting up a whole new thing.
Right.
And if you really wanted to make good use of that time, you might have the school open for, for...
Tours.
Student, for...
Student tours, orientation.
Yeah.
Staff. Voluntary.
Orientation, walking around in the building at that, that day.
You could open the school up, and the staff doesn't have to be there, but you could have some people there.
Right, they wouldn't be quiet to be there, but...
No, right, you could have administrators there, you could have...
Acclamation Day.
Right.
You could do it even like they, seriously, get some volunteers, the student council or whatever, and do like they do with the colleges, you know, have them, their trained and prepped, and bringing in and doing tours through the building for, for students, incoming students.
So that on, on that following Monday, you've got some traffic cops in the, in the hallways to tell people where to go and how to get there, and...
It's interesting.
What is the final, what's the, what's the last day? If we had five snow days this year, what's the last day of school?
The 20, that Wednesday.
The 20, no, but what date is it, do you know?
I have it right here.
See, the theory of the new building is it's so simplistic, it's so much harder to find your way around the existing high school than it will be the snow building. You have the academic building, and then you come out to Main Street, and everything's right there.
It's Wednesday, the 25th.
So, we're only talking a day?
No, we're talking two days, it would be, it would be the 26th.
Right, but you're saying Wednesday, the 25th.
I know, I know.
And now we're saying Friday, the 26th, it's one day.
I know.
What's the difference?
There is no difference.
It's just something to consider.
Yeah, consider it.
Trying to weigh all the frozen costs.
And it's thinking out of the box in the sense that I understand the administrative council and everybody, you know, and yourself, looking at this, this calendar, but taking into consideration the project and...
Sure, and that's why we, I mean, to be honest, we also put that professional development day there, in case we needed a little wiggle room.
Yeah, because of that, right, right.
But now you're offering the opportunity for a little more wiggle room.
I think it's a good idea.
And...
I was thinking it, too, when I said, you know...
And as far as the...
Well, thank you.
Construction managers concerned, we take draft off of this in hand at times.
Yeah, we say, look...
I give a countdown every construction meeting we're at, as to how many days are left till the first day of school, and...
We have not given one hour.
No.
No.
And I think it's still important to shoot for mid-August.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And, and they have no in, interest in making it longer.
No, I know.
I think the idea, though, of, of having students give tours to the new school, I mean, it's, it's a lot of work, and I don't know how it would be coordinated, but I'm sure the student council would love to do that. There may be other clubs that, what's the club that does the community service?
Interact, the interact club.
The interact club.
You could set it up before the end of the school, yeah.
Slam, I mean, all of those groups.
ROPM will be the instructor.
Yes.
And we can bring some students together.
Get them in there, the first day, we can get them in so that they can, you know, do an orientation or a...
A student council would be very much interested.
Would parents be unhappy that way?
They'd be excited about it, no, they'd be excited about it.
Delaying to the 8th?
That's a little bit of a concern on my part, but because Labor Day is so early, we're losing a week in the summer.
Yeah, and I think, I think that we can't, because you, you have to have the PD day for the teachers and then the Welcome Back Day, you can't start elem-, I was, I was thinking maybe you could start elementary earlier, but you can't, because all the teachers have to come back for the orientation and the PD at the same time.
And I would still keep the PD day, it'd be prior to the students returning in that, you know?
Right, yeah.
Because of the technology, and giving teachers an opportunity to engage...
But what we're saying is you could do that on Thursday, and you could do the PD day Thursday.
Yes, I'm, I'm hearing that, Thursday and Friday.
The orientation on Friday, and then Monday, everybody comes back.
And, and even, even better than that, what's, what you're doing is you're orienting the teachers, and then you're giving them a weekend to...
Sure, the process.
Process there, get it in their mind what is going on.
Actually, Cat, too, that orientation day, obviously, the teachers are gonna report to their respective schools and everything, right, that day?
Well, they start with me.
Right, and then they go to the chair.
Then, then they end up at the schools.
Right.
And then they go to the...
So that'll be a good, I mean, obviously, that'll give them an opportunity to get in there and, you know?
And we were planning on making sure that they had time to get settled in.
I think it's a, I think it's a good suggestion.
This is like the third year in a row Labor Day's been on a Monday.
It's unbelievable, isn't it amazing? You know, we're set up that way.
Well, I, I really, the more I think about it in this short amount of time, the more I like it.
If you have pro-, I mean, we're, I don't think we're forcing it.
We're only talking one day later, Drew, because this year, the 25th is the last day of school, next year it's the 26th.
Right, right. I mean, from that perspective...
If you stop, it's off, we won't have any more snow days.
It's a change in what has been.
No, I know, calling them off two at a time.
Exactly, I know.
Okay, okay, okay.
Follow the leader. I mean, you play follow the leader with all the other superintendents.
Are you kidding? We're out there first.
No, it's a good call.
It wasn't a good call, it was a right call. The Thursday was actually the worst of the days, there was no way to...
Well, I like your suggestion. I, I would like to bring it back to administrative council that will be taking place in another week. I, and I think all of the reasons that you've provided today are good, solid reasons why we should give that serious consideration.
We could actually, and, and, you know, the, all the tours and stuff, you know, we'd have to talk to John about it, but, you know, they have the community service requirement.
Absolutely.
That would be a great community service thing if students wanted to do that.
Yeah.
It would be awesome.
And it promotes leadership in our students.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's a, it's a great idea.
Because it gives extra time. We could, you could actually do, on, on Wednesday, the 3rd, you could have tours of the schools, right?
You, you could set it up to...
Yes.
And then the 4th and 5th, you have orientation, you have PD.
Yes.
I'd almost give two days for the tours.
Yeah, you could even do it on the 2nd and 3rd.
You could do this at 3rd, like a three-hour time slot on each day or something of that nature.
Sure, sure.
And what is the, this is a little off, off the calendar, but what is the plan And what is the, this is a little off, the calendar, but what is the plan to give tours to the public when the, we haven't talked about that yet?
We haven't talked about that.
We've got to see how much leeway we have.
Yeah.
Well, you know, if we get mid-August delivery, then we have time to do a lot more probably.
Because that's obviously something I know we'd want to do, but obviously the schedule.
I think.
We could do it after school opens too, if we have to, on a weekend.
I think that makes a lot of sense to me. After we've moved in and got, and we're settled.
Because you can see actual, what actual classrooms look like that are.
That's right.
There's work in there, there's.
That's right. That would make sense to me.
I definitely hope that's on the, on the plan because I'm sure the community wants to.
Oh.
To see.
Without a doubt.
School.
But I think the weekend, there's more time for people.
Right.
To take those tours.
Yeah.
That's, that's great. Well, thank you for your input. I appreciate that.
Geez, I'm really, I'm really, I'm really lagging tonight. Look at how late it is. I'm losing my touch as committee. I mean, the last.
Yeah, it's a couple of times in a row now.
I know. It's not acceptable. All right. We all set with that?
Yes.
Okay, minutes, we didn't have any, right?
No.
Michael, budget update?
Great. So the budget update for January is included in your packet, you know, at this point in the year, again, focusing on the expense side, you know, all total expenses remain within budgeted lines. As we discussed in the past, you know, the main drivers of, on the expense side that we need to continue to closely monitor, again, on the special education costs, you know, the tuitions and transportation and some additional costs that have arisen with homeless transportation students and so forth. You can see that that line item is reflecting a slight deficit at this point. But again, the, you know, what we had prepaid with FY13 funds at the end of fiscal 13 and with the additional revenue we got in Circuit Breaker, we're able to absorb, you know, these costs without a major impact. But again, there's not a lot of, you know, buffer should anything arise from now to the end of the year. So we're continuing to closely monitor these, these expenses for special education. The food service program, you know, we certainly have talked about this in great detail. Continue to work with Charles Management to review, you know, each month's performance and I'm meeting with them later this week to discuss December. But certainly, I think at this point, you know, through the first three to three and a half, four months of the school year, they, their projected loss is a little bit, you know, will be a little bit greater than what they had hoped. They're running about $7,000 to $10,000 above, you know, a projected loss of about $83,000, which was the projection when we got together over the summer.
Michael, do we, is the participation rate down this year or is it staying about steady?
It's staying about steady. It's in that 30 to 35% range for type A males. If you add in the, you know, the equivalent à la carte sales, it's up until like, close to 40%.
It just seems, it's looking, doing research on other schools, it just seems low participation rate, so.
It is, it is on the low end and I think that, and that is one of the, the big challenges. So at this point, you know, I think that there will probably be a need to subsidize the program with operating funds. Certainly, we have some funds in there to do that and we were able to carry over balance given status of the budget last year, but I think there's, there'll be a need to potentially go above, above what's, you know, in the operating budget at this point in time. So it certainly continues to be a challenge, continues to be something we have to pay close attention to. As we discussed earlier, certainly we'll be meeting with the evaluation team and, you know, Chairman Webster is certainly on that, on that team.
We're meeting tomorrow, right?
Meeting tomorrow at four o'clock before the SSBC meeting. The high school principal, Mr. Bernard, is taking part in that. So that, that process is underway. I think it was certainly a very competitive process. We got four pretty solid proposals. It's kind of unusual that you get four proposals. So I think going out early was a good move that that made that very competitive. Firms had a lot of time to put into it. So I think that's underway and it will certainly be, you know, an important decision going forward.
I volunteered to help before I realized there were going to be about four 400-page proposals.
Yeah.
When Michael said you can come over and pick up the proposals, I expected, there was a huge box. I couldn't even carry it out to my car.
Yeah. So it is a lot and so I appreciate the time that has gone into it, but, you know, we'll certainly, we'll certainly, I need to take a close, close look at it. Moving forward to that, I mean, again, those are the major drivers on the expense side. Everything else is sort of certainly within, within budgeted lines. Obviously, the heating season, you know, we've had some very cold days, so we'll closely look at those, but we, you know, certainly, you know, have had some, you know, the heating degree days have been a little bit higher than normal in December, so we'll look at, you know, how January and February play out. On the payroll side, again, the total expenses on the payroll side are within budgeted lines. The one change or the one new, a new, you know, addition to, in January is reflected in this report, is that you may now notice that the line item for differentials is reflecting a deficit. This is really the result of, we have, you know, in November, when we received all of the, the contract does allow professional and support staff to turn in, you know, evidence of additional credits up, you know, through October. So after the review of those, everybody's, everybody's eligibility that's eligible for credit advancement and then the North Reading Credit System have received, you know, those increases have now been applied and are now reflected in the projections. And there certainly was a, was an increase for, you know, staff that were eligible to receive a credit advancement. So that, that really is the reason behind that, that line going, going into a deficit. And this is really a trend that we're seeing over the last, the last three years. I did a little bit of research and I think over the last, you know, three years, that we've experienced about a 5 to 8% increase in, in credit advancement costs from year to year, which is certainly up from the three years prior. I think, I mean, I think that's, can be a good thing. I think that's what, what that shows is that Dr. Daley is certainly increasing the opportunities for staff to take very relevant courses and workshops to further their professional growth. However, you know, that being said, it also comes with a little bit of a, of a cost and.
But isn't this something Kathy, that we have a committee that's looking at, or is that something different in terms of the credits, right?
No, we do.
That is, and I'm on that committee. We're actually meeting tomorrow, tomorrow as well, so, on Wednesday, I believe. So we are looking at that. We're looking at the credit system and we're looking, we're doing a lot of benchmarking comparison to our peer districts on salary schedules and what an alternative salary, competitive salary schedule would look like if you had.
That's important.
More of, you know, a Bachelors 15, a Bachelors 30.
Correct, because we don't have that now. We just have basically the one.
Correct.
Kind of.
And so we're taking a hard look at that and we're looking at, you know, how was our credit system compare from.
That's good.
You know, how competitive are we with looking at and applying the North Reading Credit System to, to other competitive, comparable salary schedules. And then we'll talk next steps as a committee, if we want to come up with a sort of a crosswalk, if we come up with a, an alternative method. So I think we're making some good progress, but that is underway.
Okay.
So that was the majority by report. I think I'll just open it up to any questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
I'm looking forward to tackling the food service issue. Is the busing contract up this year or is?
The busing contract was up last year.
It's only its first year now.
So we're in the first year of a three-year contract.
Okay.
So it is settled.
Okay. Thanks, Michael. Okay, next, no staffing?
Not at this time.
We have several bids and donations. I like the new, new format here. It's very nice. Number one is a $510 donation from the Little School PTO to support funds needed for a grade four field trip to the Discovery Museum and it will support the admission and transportation costs for 51 students to attend the field trip. So can I have a motion to accept with gratitude?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, four zero. Next, we have a $200 donation for the Little Elementary School to be used by the Physical Education Department to purchase fitness equipment and it's an award by the North Reading High School Hall of Fame Association to the Little School for having the highest percent participation in this year's annual Thanksgiving Day Turkey Truck held on Thanksgiving Day. Again, I'll ask for a motion to accept with gratitude?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, four zero. Next is a $200 donation to the Middle School, again, for the Physical Education Department to purchase fitness equipment. And this is also related, also from the North Reading High School Hall of Fame to the Middle School for having a high level of participation in the Thanksgiving Day Turkey Truck. Again, I'll accept a motion for accept with gratitude?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, four zero. Then we have a $1,000 grant from the Active Schools Acceleration Project. And this grant will assist the Hood School in implementing the BOX, VOKS program, which will work to educate and promote the benefit of living a healthy, active lifestyle, encourage students to participate in physical activity each day. It'll fund needed PE equipment and supplies to initiate such a program. The grant application was initiated by the Hood School Nurse Lois Bissen with the Support of Physical Education Teacher Matt Quinlan and Principal Glenn McKay. So again, I'll accept a motion to accept this with gratitude.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, four zero. And finally, we have a $5,580 gift from the Jade Turner Hood School Parent Association to purchase 10 iPads for the school. And again, Kathy, I'll ask Patrick is.
Very much.
Enters these into the program as needed.
Yes.
Okay. So I, again, will accept a motion to accept this with gratitude?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, four zero. Thank you very much to everybody making these great donations to the school.
Really incredible.
That's awesome. Okay. Subcommittee updates. I think we've had two finance planning team meetings. The major focus has been, we're getting, starting to get initial revenue projections for 2015 from Liz Poveo, the Town Finance Administrator, I think that's her title, Finance Director. And those, those have really been, that's really been the main focus of the meetings. Obviously, the Governor's Budget won't be out until the end of this month, so it's kind of hard to start planning. We're all hoping for an increase in state aid, but who knows? And we've also started, started talking about capital requests. But that's been the main focus, I think.
And the capital funding.
Right, capital funding, right.
To the program for the next five years.
Right. Don Kelleher from the, from the Capital Planning Committee was there at our last meeting talking about strategy to raise funds for, for funding capital purchases over the next five years. I think those are the main, main things. Yeah. Coming up, we have Athletic Subcommittee tomorrow. Policy Subcommittee is meeting next week. And then we have the Finance Planning Team on February 7th. Correspondents?
No.
Administrator report?
Earlier this evening, I handed out packets to you. I'll just review this information quickly. The, I've already indicated to you that we will have Mrs. Judy Diamond attending the February 24th as our representative. In terms of the School Committee NIASK training, I spoke with the Chair. You know that we have our NIASK visit team, site visit team coming on March 2nd to the 5th. And Principal Bernard and Assistant Principal LaPratt would like to conduct a training for the School Committee. And so they are available on January 27th at 6:00 PM. So they will, we are meeting at the Middle School that night, which is very convenient. So we'll be able to have this training in the Central Office Conference Room. And you may recall in December, I have in front of me the binder that was distributed to all of you. They're asking that you review this binder prior to coming to the meeting and bring it with you because the training will revolve around the contents of this binder. So please bring it with you. You received it at the December meeting. So that has been set. And then included in this packet for you is the SEEM Collaborative Annual Report. As you know, under the new legislation, I'm required to bring forward to you several times a year, information from the collaboratives. So this annual report gives you a really good overview of the focus of the work that's being done in the collaboratives. And just on page three, it talks about what the focus of the work that had been done in the collaborative over the year was. And then this entire report is organized around five collaborative objectives. Those are outlined for you on page six. And then in the subsequent pages, there's lots of detail that has been provided to you around programs and services that are offered through the SEEM Collaborative, some of the professional development opportunities that they provide. And then lots of information that has to do with their finances. So I'm going to provide this to you. I'll be happy to answer questions at a follow-up. School Committee meeting, there's, is more information than you could imagine included in that report. And similarly, you have the annual report from the North Shore Education Consortium, the North Reading Public School District, which belongs to two consortiums or two collaboratives instead of just one. And so on page three of the North Shore Education Consortium, which is a collaborative, we have a new Executive Director. Her name is Francine Rosenberg. And on page three, she talks about what her focus has been since she has come on board. And so that's outlined for you on page three. And then she goes through the annual report talking about the mission, the focus, objectives. She also outlines the school programs. There's a little more, there are more graphs and tables to provide that data to you. There's descriptions of each of the programs that are housed in the North Shore Education Collaborative. So she provides information regarding those programs, transition programs, in-district programs, what's offered through the family center and professional development. And then she provides a financial summary. Their audit had not taken place yet, so that information has not been included, but I'll provide that to you at a future meeting. So those are the two annual reports. There's so much information. I encourage you to take a look at them. Our students are involved in both of these collaboratives and they're providing, they're receiving high-quality services from each. In addition, I provided to you a letter to Mr. Bernard regarding the MIAA Sportsmanship Award. North Reading High School has again qualified for the 2013 MIAA Sportsmanship Honor Roll. And what this is, is it's a way for MIAA to honor and recognize schools that did not have any coaches or any student athletes disqualified from a contest from an entire academic year. And so the high school has received this award in the past. The first year that you receive the award, you receive a banner. And then each year that you receive the award, you are given a patch that can be added to the banner and displayed in the school. And so they, in this letter, it indicates that we will receive the 2013 patch to be added to the banner that has already been received by the high school. It's quite a distinguished honor that we have such high-quality coaches and student athletes in our school district. And they perform at the highest caliber of professionalism.
And where do they get in that new gym?
I know. It's amazing.
Where do they get in that new gym, Jerry?
Yep, I can't wait.
And then finally, what's being offered through your organization, MASC, is a park workshop. So I provided the information to you if you are interested in signing up. This is a free workshop. It's being offered on Tuesday, January, January 21st at the McGlynn Middle School Library in Medford from 6:30 to 8:30 PM.
I wish I had brought it, but there was also, there was a school committee member from Wilmington attempting to set up and it has been set up. There's a, a session that's been set up for parents, school committee members, basically anybody that wants to go. I think it's at the State House with Commissioner Chester.
Oh.
Related to Park.